Would we live to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After studying the political leaders, I think it's fitting to read this letter that I prepared. It's, as many of you know, last Thursday was the 75th anniversary of the D-Day invasion. And in recognition of that, I can do a short overview of that eventual date. On June 6, 1944, the Western Allies of World War II launched the largest amphibious invasion in history. More than 156,000 American, British, and Canadian troops stormed 50 miles of Normandy's fiercely defended beaches located on the northern coast of France. The operation consisted of 6,936 ships and landing vessels, 2,395 aircraft, 867 gliders to deliver airborne troops. Some of the troops included 14 Comanche code talkers who relayed critical tactical messages in their native American tone. The Normandy invasion began with overnight parachute and glider landings, massive air attacks and naval bombardments. In the early morning, amphibious landings commenced on five beaches code named Sword, Juno, Gold, Omaha, and Utah. The troops from the United States landing on Omaha and Utah, Britain landing on Gold and Sword, Canada landing on Juno. During the evening, the remaining elements of the airborne divisions landed. Off the coast of England, 749 U.S. soldiers and sailors were killed during preparation for the D-Day invasion alone. The total Allied losses at Normandy estimated to be at least 4,413. It's estimated over 425,000 Allied and German troops were killed, wounded, or went missing during the Battle of Normandy, which lasted until August. I would like to take a moment to honor those brave men and women who we call our greatest generation. And to ensure their sacrifice does not go unnoticed, their numbers continue to quickly decrease, as most of them are in their 90s. As you watch and listen to their interviews, they all tell you they did not consider themselves heroes. Rather, they would like to be remembered for their contribution to a nation that secures the belief of freedoms we currently enjoy for all future generations. And when I look around the room, there are many members in our families who made a contribution to this effort, whether it was on the battlefield or here at home. Short story about my grandparents. My grandfather was an immigrant from Norway. My grandmother was a French-Canadian. And they worked in the Remington shipyards where they... My grandma, believe it or not, was a welder. My grandpa was a pipe fitter. And they built and repaired naval vessels that returned from the Pacific. And I remember those stories that were passed down to me, as well as I know those stories were passed down to you. And I hope that we never forget that. I just want to close by saying we're honored. We are honored by your sacrifice and the contribution that you made, and we salute you.
Thank you, Gerald.
You will open for public comment. Any public comment?
Craig Burns. I wanted to make a point of public comment about a group, a Facebook group, Townsend Classifieds. It is a group that has more people than are in this county inside of it, and pretty much everybody that's in this entire county. It's headed by an administrator named Katie Gruel. And she is actively editing political content that's posted via the commission, via the city council, anything that has to do with local politics. She's, as someone posts onto her site, she's actively editing it, as in, she's not deleting the post. She's editing the comments that are made by deleting what she considers inappropriate or considers not relevant. And it completely changes the way that the conversation looks like. And it could certainly be a reason that we have such a communication problem here, just at the space level. And why we have people come in just kind of spontaneously combust is because we don't all know what's going on. And this being right now, the major line of communication in the county, she's strangely able to edit all conversations that have to do with government. And she does actively. I watch her. And I'm banned from the site after releasing my report of the sheriff, which was verified. So she's, has it, has political interests of unknown, whether or not she's doing it on purpose or not. But it definitely needs to be something that is addressed, inquired into, as into the censorship that this woman is able to apply onto Broadwater County. She's censoring 6,500 people actively. And because it is the number one and only site that the entire community goes to as far as goods transfers, just local messages, events that happen locally, like something at the park, it's where everybody goes to get information. So you trust that that is raw, pure information flowing to you, not being edited by an administrator that's actually giving you half of a story. So a lot of the comments that are made that have to do with stuff that's happened here are deleted. And those people's voice who have made that comment are deleted. Yet, the people who didn't ruffle her feathers the wrong way, they're left there. And that's what we are left to see of the remaining conversation. So the scope of what's going on politically is never really seen by the entire, you know, by everybody because we have people who are actively editing how that looks. And that's a big deal. That's freedom of speech, censorship. And it's actively changing the way people look at how things are happening down here. Instead of having maybe five people that they can trust that spoke up and said, "Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea." Those five people don't exist anymore. And so you don't even know if they're saying anything, if they moved away, because they're not part of these groups anymore, which are such a huge key part of our society right now. So I think it's something that society right now needs to be looking, our Broadwater County in general, Townsend, the commission, need to be looking at this active censorship by Facebook, which is modifying the way that we see these issues. And then when we come here and converge, we're not on the same page anymore. And I believe that because Katie Gruel is actively doing that, is actively influencing and causing some of these fights by putting kind of a gray cloud over what we all see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Cheryl?
Yes, a letter I wrote to you, and I'll give you a copy as soon as I finish. Commissioners, with regard to the audit publication statement in the Broadwater Reporter Friday, June 7, 2019, it was cited the publication was in compliance with Montana Code Annotated 2-7-521. Item 1A of 2-7-521 states, "After the expiration of the 30-day period provided for in the 2-7-511, the local government shall send a copy of each audit report to a newspaper of general circulation in the area of the local government entity. However, each county audit must be sent to the official newspaper of the county. After accessing the Montana.gov site for audits and financial reviews, it revealed the audit report for fiscal year 2018 was received on March 26. That would have made the expiration date for publication no later than April 26, 2019. Commissioners, I request this 42-day failure to be recorded in the minutes and this letter be made a part of the records for this meeting."
Thank you.
Mike, will you, on the agenda, it says revisit the planning board membership and meeting policy. Will you be doing that today? I know that agenda's slightly changed.
Were we going to do that today, Nicole?
Our planning board meeting isn't until this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
So I think it would be premature.
Didn't we talk last Monday about revisiting the member who has not been able to come to meetings? And how to address that you were going to take last week to talk to him and see if our alternate member would then be an active member?
Okay, I guess that was a misunderstanding on my part. I thought I was to speak to him today and ask our alternate to attend the meeting today.
Okay.
At today's meeting.
No, my intent, I won't speak for anyone else, but the reason is on the agenda so that it could end this morning. So it could have been addressed so that we could ensure a quorum at 2:30. Debbie's only referring to, I think, the Trust Board, which is considered not the planning board.
Right.
And that was my mistake. I mis-wrote her email and put it on the 10th instead of the 17th.
Right.
It will be on the 17th. Not a big deal. But it has no bearing whatsoever on the planning board discussion.
Right. No, I understand. I just have, I guess, a general question that, about committees, like the Trust Board, the Fair Board. I guess boards, not committees. And so I'm not representing the Trust Board of the Rod and Gun.
Oh, okay.
But myself right now. I applied, I sent a letter in January 4th, gave you guys copies and an email to Nicole's office that I would like to be considered for the Fair Board. I absolutely never heard back.
I don't recall ever receiving that to you guys.
We never.
I don't either, Debbie. I'm sorry.
So I just wondered what the process, because the planning board discussion last week was very open in here. Was the Fair Board position ever discussed in here?
Do you have any answer to that? I don't want to speak for the commission, but I do know, I did receive your letter. I sent it on to the Fair Board for them to make the determination and the recommendation to me, and I had not heard back from the Fair Board.
Okay.
So, because that's generally how that goes.
I'm just trying to understand the process.
It generally goes to the boards, who then make their preference to me, and I take it to the commission, and the commission takes action on it. So I have not heard back from the Fair Board. And so I should have circled back around to them.
Okay.
So I will do that.
Okay.
Hey, Nicole?
Yes, sir.
Do you still have a copy of Debbie's letter?
I do.
Can you send that to us, please?
Yep, sure.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Debbie.
No, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry too. I should have circled that out.
And I don't know if that position's been filled, or... But I was interested as a person. My whole background is for age and MFA and all that. So that was my personal interest. So, I don't know. I just want to understand the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
I'm the commissioner. He gazes on that board, so I think that we'd love to have you, so.
We'll talk.
We'll talk to the board. Thank you.
Yes, Shirley?
I have a question. Mr. Chairman, last week, when we were, when you were asked what the routine was to inform the public of things you were going, and what's my word? Of proposals that were read and then to be voted on. And we were informed that the solid waste penalty phase paper had been, the public had been informed. My question is, the first reading was noted in the paper that I got Friday night, and you've already passed it. So how is the public informed? Where do we get the information we need to have before something's passed in a week and we are told that the public's been informed?
I think that the first reading would, the first reading should have had the prior, the prior date of the meeting would have been, I believe, May, I don't have a calendar.
It's 12 days prior to that, right?
Yeah.
The first reading would have been like May 20th? Because we had to have 12 days between readings.
Was that published anywhere that we would have seen it?
It was published in the paper, I believe. I know it was posted. I don't know if it was required to be published.
I think so, and I think it was submitted for publication.
I think they were both, it was submitted prior to, because we had to make sure we had 12 days between readings. I believe it was in the paper like, probably would have been on the 10th or the 17th of those issues. It should have been, first reading should have been advertised and on for that, because that was the second reading that we had the other day.
Was it ever published in its entirety? Does it need to be published in its entirety so that people reading the paper could know what the proposal was?
I don't know if it was published in its entirety.
Would that be a good thing to maybe do?
Mr. Chairman, the way that legal ads are published is they refer to the document. And anyone who wants to see a copy can either look on the website or come in here where it is posted for people to view in its entirety. So the answer, yes, is yes. But the legal ad, the statute governing that doesn't state that the entire document is printed in the newspaper.
Okay. So it doesn't require that the entire document is printed? Okay. Any other, anyone else? Tim?
Just a quick follow-up. I guess I'm going to say that's a little bit above my involvement there, of what gets submitted from here into the paper editor. But I would certainly be happy to look into exactly what was submitted and what the situation is there. Because it is the discretion of the editor, what goes in there. Again, it's above my pay grade, if you will. As a volunteer, I rarely don't know, but I would certainly be glad to look into that for the people to help make sure that we are on the front page of what's going on and how it's being disseminated to the people. And then I guess I have a, I guess it's on behalf of the people, citizen as well as the paper. About three years ago, maybe a little longer, a discussion was held at several meetings where the citizens were concerned about not being able to hear the discussions. The audio portion in not only here, but even when the commission meetings were held up in the courtroom, people just really had a hard time hearing, some people, what's being said. And even with, you know, our recording of this with our ability, it's been difficult at times to be able to understand and hear what's being said by certain individuals. Not picking on anybody, but sometimes they talk really soft or really fast, and it's really hard to hear them. So three or so years ago, a presentation was brought to the commission to consider a sound, audio, video system. And one of our local business people came in and gave a presentation to the commission to consider, which included prices of that system that could be used to make sure that everybody can have a full recording of the meetings. And there was never a decision made on that. So I guess on behalf of the Broadwater Reporter and the citizens of Broadwater County, I would like to ask that maybe this commission consider taking another look at that and so that, you know, everybody can be on the front page. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See COS, Bernadette?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll go with our 1015 Nicole Brown, Community Development, Hamilton, Subsequent Minor Subdivision, Request for Final Approval, Revisit Planning Board Membership and Meeting Policy, Park Trail and Ranches State.
Good morning. So this is the Hamilton Subsequent Minor Subdivision. They are requesting final approval. This is in the southern end of Broadwater County. Highway 287 here. River View is the name of the road within the subdivision. That's why it's a subsequent minor. They're splitting Lot 3 into Lot 3B and 3A. There's an existing home here.
Does this have a... I guess in regards to the Park Trails, does this have a a definition or restrictions on the no-build zone?
No, it does not. Which is timely, because this is why we're having this second discussion today. No, it does not. I think moving forward, I think it's going to be important to put a definition of no-build zone somewhere, either in the regulations or on the plat. They don't know that we... To put something on this, when they're coming for final, you can't add any new conditions onto a subdivision at this stage of the game. But you can make a statement in this meeting regarding a no-build zone.
So later this afternoon, this morning, we're going to discuss that. And I guess whatever it is that we decide, probably we'll set the precedent for all future no-build zones until we actually get that sorted out in a subdivision.
In the regulations, yeah. Because it is not defined anywhere in Montana Code Annotated either.
Right. Okay.
Yes, Bernadette?
Just a suggestion too. On a, in the past, we have put a definition of a no-build zone, which I have no problem adding to this, because I'm working with the client, I know what his intentions are. But in the past, we've done no-build zone, no building as defined in the subdivision, the Broadwater County subdivision regulations. Because of course, they don't want a building. They don't want a house, or, you know, them to build a big barn or something between them and the river. So I could print on sticky paper, no-build zone, and then a definition saying, no building as defined in the Broadwater County subdivision regulations, because the definition of building is in our regulations.
And I think if you want to include septic systems in that as well, or if you don't want to have a septic system in the no-build zone.
That I don't know what their intentions were as one.
This is for our discussion as we move forward, so. Okay.
And I think something too to keep in mind, I don't want to get ahead of myself on the Park Trail, but I did have a conversation with Michael Langis, Attorney Attorney of Pugh, regarding no-build zone. And as long as there's evidence in the record to back up what that no-build zone is. And I can tell you that there is evidence in the record, the purpose of that no-build zone was because these tracks did not meet the 3 to 1 ratio, the length being three times greater than the width. And also because with the Hamilton's home being here, they don't want their view obstructed. So I think there's evidence in the record to support this no-build zone. And I appreciate that Bernadette is willing to add something to the plat for, on behalf of her client, because again, you can't make that condition at this point, but if they're willing to add that, they certainly can. And I think that that would further support this no-build zone. Moving on. Condition number one. Plans for sewage treatment and water supply shall be submitted to the Montana Department of Environmental Quality and the Broadwater County Health Department for review and approval. The certificate of subdivision approval shall be filed with the final plat. And to further back up this no-septic system, since they do have DEQ approval and the system is outside of the no-build zone, it would be very difficult for them unless they have the certificate of variance, or amendment, I should say, DEQ. Number two, coming around. The applicant shall contribute 2/50ths of the cost to upgrade the existing road, River View Road, to Broadwater County subdivision road standards for a number one local road. It shall require that they obtain a current estimate. And the reason for that being that this is a subdivision road. And it has been our practice, if there's a subsequent minor and/or a major on a subdivision road, they will need to obtain a bid for the improvements to that subdivision road and then pay 1/50th per lot. So this, even though there's an existing home there, they're still paying the 2/50ths, because this is a two-lot sub-home. Number three. Assigned and approved Montana Department of Transportation right-of-way agreement, equal or greater than the county subdivision road requirements, which are currently at a width of 24 feet, must be received. So this is an email from MDT stating that that approach is adequate for an additional home. Number four. A weed management plan for the existing development shall be submitted to the county weed district for review and approval. All specifications and requirements of an approved plan shall be met. So this is a signed weed plan. However, if you note on the cover letter, Jessica Bushnell, the county weed coordinator, stated that she will go and re-inspect the property in the spring, as it was during her winter months, that the weed plan was submitted. I'm just going to read five because I have nothing to pass around. Number five states, "The applicant will be required to submit the final plat drawings in electronic format to Broadwater County in ArcGIS, AutoCAD, or MicroStation format. Additional materials may be requested by the county in electronic format to facilitate review of application materials." And I've received that email. I have it stored on my computer. Number six. "The applicant in the fire protection authority having jurisdiction shall use their best efforts to draft a fire protection plan specifically for this subdivision in accordance with Broadwater County subdivision regulations. The plan shall be equally acceptable to the FPA-HJ, the applicant, and the county governing authority. The plan shall adequately address the fire risk analysis, all findings effect, and appropriate mitigation measures. In the event the parties are unable to come to agreement by the final plat submittal, the applicant shall become eligible to provide a per-lot cash and loofah fee for water supply as may be defined in the Broadwater County subdivision regulations in effect at the time of submission." Let's see, you have a signed and approved fire plan and no additional comments. Number seven. Plans for the location and installation of individual mailboxes shall be reviewed and approved by the United States Postal Service prior to installation. Do you have a letter from the tree forks post office? And number eight is the plat itself. The final plat shall be prepared in accordance with applicable state survey requirements, Montana Subdivision and Plating Act survey requirements, and the county subdivision regulations. The plat has been signed by examining land surveyor and county surveyor, I'm sorry. Number nine. The book and page reference to the restrictive covenant filed as a county clerk and reporter shall be indicated on the face of the final plat. In addition, restrictive covenants revocable or alterable only with the consent of the Board of County Commissions shall be placed upon the property and shall provide for the following. A, notification of the potential health risks from radon concentrations and etc. Risks can be evaluated through soil tests and mitigated through radon abatement techniques incorporated into and mitigated through radon abatement techniques incorporated into structures. B, a notification that all dwelling units within the subdivision should be constructed to specifications which meet or exceed equivalent provisions in the applicable state building code for this seismic zone, which is Zone Three. C, any additional replacement or relocated utility line shall be installed underground in accordance with county subdivision regulations, unless otherwise determined by the utility. D, any exterior lighting shall be directed downward to minimize visibility beyond the property lines. E, a waiver of the right to protest to join a special district for the purpose of providing community water and/or wastewater treatment system improvements and/or maintenance. F, a restrictive covenant binding the landowner, any heirs, successors, and assigns, and all future owners of property within the subdivision, agreeing herein to hold Broadwater County harmless and indemnify Broadwater County from all claims, demands, obligations, suits, causes of action, damages, and liability, including the county's costs and attorney's fees arising in any manner whatsoever out of or relating to the existent use, operation, repair, and or maintenance of the following. Sub item one, earthquake faults, zone, and any seismic activity. And sub item two, water availability. G, all cats and dogs must be restrained, penned, or otherwise under the control of their owner at all times. H, a notification of the presence of agricultural operations in the vicinity. I, the lot should be maintained in a clean, attractive, and weed-free manner. Noxious weeds must be pulled, sprayed, or cut prior to seed maturity. J, a waiver of right to protest joining a rail improvement or maintenance district for the purpose of road maintenance, mosquito control, or equitably funding parks and maintenance of parks. K, address number shall be clearly marked at the driveway entrance to each lot and be easily identified from the road. L, a notification that lots in the subdivision may be subject to impact if they've been placed prior to lot sales. Number 10. Prior to filing the final plat, the following improvements shall be installed or otherwise guaranteed. A, any necessary improvements required by the stormwater drainage plan, weed management plan, or approach permit. And B, utilities of running and available to each lot. So I'm sorry, there was two different documents here. So that's 10A showing the stormwater drainage locations. I did speak with Sean Rowland. And it's acceptable to install those drainage facilities at time of septic installation. Because the purpose of these storm drainage basins is to catch any water created... I'm sorry, flowing. I'm trying to remember how he explains to me. Because of impervious material, i.e. a home. So it is acceptable to continue to install those at time of septic installation and once the home location is determined. And then 10B coming around shows where the utilities have already been installed and there are utility easements in place. 11A. Prior to filing the final plat, the applicant shall A, provide proof that all taxes and special assessments assessed and levied on the property are paid for the current tax share, including any past delinquencies.
So how did they sign this, Nicole?
Excuse me, at the time that they signed the plat and reported it all. Because it doesn't need to be notarized. And so it's done correctly and the correct report is out there. Am I good to move on? Yes. 11B, and this is the final item. 11B, provide documentation, an abstract title of plating certificate, showing that the applicant is the lawful owner of the property with the apparent authority to subdivide the same, showing the names of lien holders or claimants of record and the written consent to the subdivision by the owners of the land, if other than the applicant, and any lien holders or claimants of record against the land. Let's see there that Mr. and Mrs. Hamilton are the lawful owners of said property. And that concludes the list of conditions.
Is there a motion for the Hamilton Minor subdivision?
This is a pretty straightforward minor subdivision. Of course, this is the second time we've seen it. So I will move that we grant final approval to the Hamilton Minor subdivision.
There's a second motion. Motion being made in second and in third of discussion. Take the vote, all in favor? Both stand. Motion carries.
Special pen there.
This one, no, that one?
There's only one special one, I'm sorry. I should have brought three. It's that special. I only have one.
Here, Eric.
How are you? I was all... So prepared.
I'd like to also note, just back to what we were talking about. I just got thinking that the covenants of this specify the no-build zone also. In the covenants, it says the no-build zone will have any type of either permit or temporary structure, no recreational business equipment or property allowed in the no-build zone. You can't even... You can have ten hens, but you can't have the chicken house on the no-build zone. So the covenants do define the no-build zone too for them. So that's helpful.
Does it have anything in there about the shed that already exists in the no-build zone?
No, it doesn't, but it's pretty dilapidated. I mean, it's just needs to be carried away. But you showed it there.
There's your pen.
You gotta make sure you don't make it.
You're gonna mix it up.
They're special. There we go.
Thank you. There's a pen on the...
All right, moving on. So with this planning board member position, I guess that was my misunderstanding. I was hesitant to bring someone on board this late in the game when we have a meeting today was how I recall their conversation going.
From a decision today, which is whether we have an alternate, are we going to send them paperwork? Did that get done?
Yes, and the alternate is planning to be here today.
Okay. So my concern and the reason that it's on the agenda, and you know, misunderstandings happen, it's not a big deal. But my concern is that we have another failed quorum. Do you have confirmation from your board members that you will have a quorum today?
I have confirmation from three.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And just this morning, I plan on going back up and contacting the other two just to make sure that I will have five there. At the very least, three is a quorum.
And Chad, will you follow up? I believe it is okay as long as... I don't know what the rules are with alternates. I've seen it done. I don't know if that's in statute. I don't know if it's just best practice. I don't know if it needs to be in the bylaws. Will you follow up on that perhaps with Mackenzie McCarthy and Mako? She can let you know if he can step in if there's a vacancy or if he needs to be advised sooner.
Okay.
Just so that we have as many bodies on the board as possible. Three is the minimum. But really, for something this big, we should have all five.
We should have it, absolutely.
If we do have the member who has not been coming to meetings not show today, I think we need to follow through with conversation at the very least and then follow through with getting a solid group of five on that board. Because when one person is habitually not showing, it puts an added burden on the other board members. And nobody looks good when you plan a planning meeting and you don't have a quorum. And then you bring a subdivision to us and say, "Yeah, didn't get planning board approval." So I'm very concerned about this. And I just think we need to follow through. It's in your bylaws. We're following the rules. There's nothing more than us just trying to follow those rules for the entire county.
So I will confirm with Mackenzie. In the event that I only have four members available plus an alternate today, can the alternate be a voting member at that point? Correct? That's the first time I make sure I'm understanding this.
Okay.
Was Ross and Chad planned to attend today?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And I assume Ross is going to hear affirmatives?
Yes.
But I'm not surprised to hear that. And I'm not surprised to hear that Chad will be there as an alternate. That's, I think that's excellent. We've taken a step in right direction.
Oh, yeah. It's important because this is kind of a big deal. And he needs to be informed.
And this is the introductory meeting for the planning board. So he would be learning. These new members would be learning at the very same time as the existing planning board members.
That's good too.
Good.
So 2:30 in this room.
Will you be here at 1:30 as well, just to sit in?
I'm sorry, what is the 1:30?
That is the Wheatland Infrastructure Grant.
Okay.
And it's connected.
I will kind of be here. Thank you.
That's all I have on the subject.
Park Trail Ranch?
Park Trails.
So just for the public and also this commission, our dilemma with Park Trail Ranch Estates, there was a no-build zone put in place through an extensive drainage on Park Trail Ranch Estates. The subdivision was given final plat approval, I believe, in 2007, just now starting to infill. Lots are selling, people are constructing. So with this no-build zone being there, the question is, how do you get to the back part of the property if there's a no-build zone that cuts through the center of five of the lots? Again, no definition in our regulations, no definition in FCM what no-build zone is. I pored through Park Trail Ranch Estates' record, its entire file, to see if there was something in there identifying no-build zone. I cannot find anything. My conversation, email conversation with Tara Depew, Mako Land use attorney, this would have to go back through subdivision approval. They would have to submit these lots for subdivision approval, even if they only had one condition, that a culvert or a bridge was engineered and constructed appropriately. Because otherwise, this county has no controls over what they're putting in that no-build zone, the integrity of it, whether it's going to work, whether it's going to stop water flowing and affect up and downstream water users or not necessarily users, but land users. Darrell and I met with the Realtor of these parcels. And I think there was some misunderstanding on what the information she received versus how we were looking at this here. I think it was a very good meeting. The Realtor suggested that maybe we could have a commission-required covenant that if indeed a landowner wanted to build on the back portion of their property, they would have to have a culvert or a bridge engineered and constructed but approved by the homeowners association and make that a commission-required covenant. So subsequently, I had a conversation, a face-to-face conversation with Tara on this issue. Tara, again with Mako, Land use attorney. And she said, "As long as there's evidence in the record to support this." So we kind of circled back around. There's nothing in the record to support that, to support a commission-required covenant because there's nothing in the record identifying how they would ever get to that back portion of their property. What is the definition of this no-build zone? The slopes on it are quite steep. We do have regulation, subdivision regulation, that says a driveway cannot be greater than 12% slope. However, we don't have building codes, so we don't have someone out there enforcing or regulating the construction of driveways, only subdivision roads. So I'm at a loss as to any other option than Tara's original advice to do a subsequent minor subdivision on each of these lots. Again, with just the one condition, because there's no evidence in the record to support a commission-required covenant for an engineered and constructed culvert and/or a bridge to be approved by the homeowners association. Nothing that I can find anyway. I will look through it again. So I'm certainly not asking you to make any determination. And I don't think that that's why it's on the agenda. This was simply for information purposes so we all know where we're moving forward on this. I can also discuss this with Corey Swanson, our attorney, and see if he has any other ideas. Unless you have some other direction that you would like me to look. But my path that I'm going to choose at this point is to continue to look through the record. Again, I'm going to Tara Depw again and look through the application and all of the materials to see if there's anything in there that would support that. Because I do think that that is a viable option. Obviously, the homeowners in that area, they want to maintain the integrity of this no-build zone of their subdivision of the land. So if they were the ones to be responsible for signing off on the... And I don't mean signing off legally, but through the HOA, similar to house plans. You know, there's many HOAs in the county. You have to bring your house plan to the HOA and they will give you approval.
It was my understanding that they do have a fairly active HOA there.
That was my understanding too from our conversation, yeah. That they would be involved. But the question was not whether or not we could put that burden, if you will, on the HOA. It was whether or not the record was... HOA, it was whether or not the record would support this.
So the record meaning that the type of application for subdivision?
Or the findings of fact and order document, or the staff report, or the minutes, anything. Basically, anything that I have, this is not Park Trail, but you know, this, when I have a subdivision, every one of them has an extensive file like this of minutes and paperwork, documents, letters from the public, anything. So I just need to carve out a few hours to go through it, looking at it from this perspective. Is there anything in the record to support the HOA signing off on these engineered culverts and/or bridges?
I have high hopes that the planning board in their review would have had some discussion about that. Of course, I don't know, but if there is nothing in the record, is a variance an option? Is a variance from the commission-required covenant an option?
I just don't know where your authority would lie at this point.
Okay, because it's already been approved, is what you're saying?
Correct, because it's already been given final plot approval and it's already been recorded.
Were you here at that time?
I was, but not acting as the planner.
Okay, so we're all kind of in the dark. Well, I'm curious what you'll find.
Yes, so I, at this point, that's going to be my plan of attack.
So where does any liability lie? Does the liability lie with the homeowners association? If this guy puts in a culvert and doesn't handle water, the water backs up, washes out his road, you have a huge dam of water come down and washes out the highway. Where does the liability, does the liability fall on the land or does the liability fall on the homeowners association? And if it falls on the homeowners association, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be willing to take on that liability.
It would be the engineer that approved it.
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's, that would be my assumption as well. You know, I'm not an attorney, so I can't give legal advice, but that would be my assumption that if indeed these crossings, whatever that might look like for each individual landowner, if they're engineered and signed off by the engineer, similar to, if they were going through the subdivision process right now, we would require that the culvert or the crossing be engineered and constructed, which then would mean the engineer submits the plans, once it's constructed, the engineer then signs off that it was constructed according to the plan. Engineers generally carry insurance for something like that. I don't know time period, so I don't know, you know, if it's 10 years, 20 years. I don't know.
So the other alternative was, what was the other alternative, having to go back through the subdivision process just for those lots?
Yes, just for those lots. Or each individual, you would have potentially five, one lot subsequent, minor subdivisions come before you, with one condition. One condition being that the crossing is engineered and constructed.
And also, it was gonna be expensive, so I mean, that was kind of one reason we were trying to find an alternative to.
Right, it would, it would cost county fees approximately $1,200 per landowner. That does not include any survey fees, because they would have to have a survey for that lot, because it would be a subdivision. However, being the alternative to not being able to utilize all of your property.
Are those lots still all owned by the developer, or are they already, are they all owned by individuals?
According to the Realtor, yeah. So I think, you know, honestly, what we're trying to come up here is, come up with is the best solution for these property owners, these individual property owners, as well as the protection of the county and other property owners. So how do we find that middle ground? There will be an expense, you know, there will be an expensive engineering, you know, that's not cheap.
That's kind of expensive engineering, then the expense of the amended plot.
Right, we could be in the ballpark of $7,000 to $10,000.
Yeah, that's kind of tough.
Right. But it's not necessarily the burden of the county to come up with this. It is the burden of the county to find the answer. And what does that mean, and how can, how can we help these people, you know, utilize all of their property? But that was the way that the subdivision was plotted, similar to this with a no-build zone.
Hopefully, between the commission and our staff, we can find a capable solution for these folks.
That's my hope.
Yeah, yeah, I have high hopes for that. If you could keep us in the loop. Do you want this on the next agenda? Is that too soon, or should we give it a couple days?
No, I will not be here next Monday. So I don't know if you have another, if you're meeting on next Wednesday? If not, that certainly wouldn't be too soon. I mean, I, my plan is to carve out, it's gonna take me two hours, but I want to, I want a solid two hours to be able to go over everything electronically and on paper, so. It shouldn't be a problem for me to get to the next agenda, as long as it's not the 17th.
Okay.
Sounds good. And if you have any other ideas, I'm certainly open to this. I think it is unfortunate, but all of this, just, you know, this really is a part of the fabric of these subdivisions. And moving forward, you know, I don't know if this was given consideration at the time. Obviously, now, we're looking at these developments and these no-build zones a little differently because of the situation, so as long as we're learning from it.
So the other discussion on Park Trails was the access onto the highway from one of those lots wanted to change. Is that up to MDT, or is that, because that was the condition of the approval, was that there was only gonna be two accesses to the highway, right?
And that one, we can make, we can amend that commission-required covenant, because it is a commission-required covenant, sorry.
And then we also discover that that road is on that person's lot.
It is, mm-hmm, yep, the easement is on that person's lot.
Yeah, so that farm road is, the easement is on that person's lot.
And so I think that there would be a strong argument for why you could amend that commission-required covenant, basically, and so when this comes up again, I can bring you language to amend that commission-required covenant. I believe it's Lot 1, you know, and it would say something along the lines of, with the exception of Lot 1, as long as they have MDT approval. So if they did want to use that access that's existing, they would have to get approval from MDT, because they, it's not our jurisdiction to tell them that they can or cannot access onto the highway, other than the commission-required covenant states no access, other than via the internal access route.
Yeah, but MDT realistically wouldn't have a problem, because they've got, the approach is already there, being used, right?
Right, I just think that it would be the courteous thing to do, to make sure that MDT gave their blessing to it if we're going to increase traffic on it.
So here's, here's the, is that now a shared driveway?
Yes, it would be, because their address point would be at that location, if, I'll win that, I'll win to that direction.
But does the joint landowner have, has a legal easement that goes through that property to it, so they can't shut, the person that gets that lot can't shut that, that landowner off from going through that easement, right?
Correct, correct. And currently, it's, it's just a farm access, it's not to any residents. There are no, there's, there's not an address assigned to that point currently, which would tell me there are no structures beyond there. But if they did decide to build, yeah.
Sure.
It could be a shared driveway.
We could kind of discuss that. If access behind that for all these other lots.
Right, if it came down to it.
If it came down to that.
Another thought, I was asked by a very brilliant citizen that we have, why and what an engineer could bring to the planning board. It seems to me that an engineer, and the way that their minds work, very detail-oriented, would have looked at that plant, plat during the discussions, and said, hey, what about? And brought out issues that probably others wouldn't have. So just to solidify for that very brilliant citizen, if an engineer's mind of the planning board is essential.
Yeah, absolutely.
So yeah, please keep us in the loop with your plan.
I will, I absolutely will. Me, too.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you get an answer on the alternate question, too, would you let us know?
I will. Yeah, thank you. I'll go ahead and make that call right now. Okay, thanks.
See, we'll go to our 11 o'clock Department Budget Submission Maintenance and Safety.
Morning. Do you have any accomplices?
I don't know if you have extras. Thank you. Otherwise, we can take these.
Thank you. Okay, we'll work things here, too. I'm gonna get some more stuff. Oh, here we go. You said you wanted also capital improvement. These are the three things I found. And I, nobody has one of the other copies.
Yay, you're the bold start, you're the first one to turn it over.
Oh, here's. And you have the prices for the fire stuff, too, right here.
Thank you.
And three. All righty.
Thanks, Ann.
Let me start with my budget. With all the savings that, you know, things I've done to help try to make savings, I've been able to work on a lot of things. Because the meter has been able to stay the same, except for now, with the costs of, from the city and the water, and their sewer costs, I'm gonna have to ask for 3,000 additional on my water and so on, my utilities. Unless, they were, said they were gonna go and talk to the city council when they have their next meeting, because we are on a meter, and I don't think that we should be paying 750 for sewer rates for watering the grass. But that's how it's gonna work out, because they don't have anything else on it. And then, the water rates are gonna go up on the $10 on the base this month, but they don't know what they're gonna do to the metered people. So I'm expecting also an increase on, increase on that to them. And then, to get Eric from his, going from 32 hours, requesting to have him go back to 40 hours, and Debbie Kelly says approximately $9,000, with the COLA for the year, if it gets approved for percentage. And then, basically, everything else stays the same, except for CIP, I do have 18, approximately 18.5 in there. I think that we need to look at maybe making sure we always try to keep 20,000 to 30,000 for any kind of major incidental cost, anything going out, like. The only thing I can see possibly would be a new HVAC at the dinner hall, only because it's really old, but I mean, we've been babying it, and it seems to be working good, I don't see it going out. Fire systems, now that one, the systems are out of date. So I got a couple different proposals from, well, for the jail, redo the unit in the jail with 13.726. They're, both the courthouse and the jail are out of date, they can't get any more parts for them. But there's nothing, you know, they're still workable, they're still working, so they're all good, it's just if they fail, we, just so we don't have to scramble for a new unit, because they can't get parts. And if they fail, then, then they're gonna scramble and pay more than this.
Yeah.
Right now, it's not a problem, just trying to be proactive on it. And the courthouse ones to change out was 4602. That one's probably more important right now, because now, I got spare parts for most of the, one in the jail, it's the one here in the courthouse, I don't, we don't have any spare parts. And they discontinued that whole panel completely.
They're different systems.
Yeah, they're different systems. You could look at, try to get a system that tie, all of them tied together, but I don't think you need to. And then, they were requesting to update their camera, like one or two cameras over in the jail, to digital, $356 apiece. They have the infrastructure there, just right now, only one camera over there records, and that's the booking camera. And they request and try to get, at least the day areas, and the three other cameras to be replaced. And the last page was Duke Security, how much they were, they were saying the courthouse is going to be, which was $6,859, and NAKO, which is out of Helena, they've been pretty good, is 4602.
What is the name of that company, 4602?
NAKO. NAKO Electronic Systems, they have a fire system over in the dinner hall.
Okay. Oh, I see that.
They've been around for a while, yeah. One of the only things I can see coming up would be the fire systems. And then all the paint of the dinner hall, the paint's peeling out on the outside of the back of the building.
So I was noticing, Mike, on the bottom of the Duke Security, it says it may be tied to the 911 dispatch office for monitoring. So are they combining the system, is that what they're doing?
No. They're already tied to dispatch. This is already tied. When it goes off, it just sends a signal over there saying there's a fire alarm in the courthouse, it doesn't tell them where at.
Oh, I got you, okay.
That's, it'd be the same thing. Because it's, the system over here tells you what pole station happened, or what smoke detector went off, or whichever. It'd still be the same one.
It is unlikely, that since it was already tied to dispatch, that the system could be a grant. So the 911, we learned this last Monday, the 911 grant fund that started by the legislature, every submittal last year, for those funds was approved and full. This could be one that could get submitted and likely approved. The same with the camera system. I know it's not that much money as related to what we have, but the Board of Crime Control does have grants, and counties have been recipients of those grants in the past. Park County is the last one I can name off the top of my head, and that was for the system. But with our planning, it's certainly something we can look at, but I just think it should be out there, that this is a known grant, you know, and if we would give this grant, it'd be, I think, pretty high based on how much it is worth. That would be the same for that one, too. And anytime, no grants are, you know, to write them and to do reports, but anytime we can take that burden off of our taxpayers, I think it's a benefit to the county overall, and most certainly to those taxpayers.
So my budget, that's the one thing I'm asking for, is that Eric, be increased, and a little increase on utilities, that's it.
Looks like you've got a budget.
We will have pretty good control of it.
Yeah.
It's helped a lot with controlling the heat and the volume.
Yeah, I know that's a heavy lift, but it's, you've done a good job.
It's a big, it's a big expense, this building, utilities.
Yeah.
Along with utilities, how are you coming with the LED light changeover?
I got the halls all turned out, and I was gonna, I was thinking about doing a couple rooms and see how people react to it. With the lighting. We'll start with the county, go to you guys' office and see how you guys feel about it. I don't wanna have it too bright or too, you know, I'm not sure how people are gonna react to that, but it would, it would help on savings later on.
I don't know about you guys, but I'm happy to be a guinea pig.
Yeah, sure.
It's a pretty minute cost for what the savings could be. I mean, your payback's like, in three months.
I started it a little place after you did here, I thought, you know, that's probably pretty smart, so.
Yeah.
So I did change over, and it's, it's different light.
It is.
But it's bright light.
It is a bright light.
And I like it, actually.
I do, too.
I do too.
It's an energetic light.
Okay. I'm always looking for different ways to help, so it's kinda like, you know, Debbie Buck's been pretty good at helping do a few things that she sees and, but she takes care of. Had a lot of the costs out.
I know you've been working with, uh, the sheriff on the water savings system, you know, where, where are you at in that?
I still gotta, I still gotta crunch numbers.
Okay.
I gotta find, I gotta, I gotta get that more fine tuned before I answer on that one.
Okay.
Right now, it doesn't feel like it's a huge payback. It's, 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 I think it's a long term, real long term.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if we just phase it in, or, um, do it all at once, I don't think it'd be a wise idea at this point. I, I'll look into a little bit more.
When, when, when you're looking at that, are, are you looking simply at your water meter, or are you also figuring your propane use on that?
Mostly just the water meter, I haven't really looked at the propane use.
So that would, that would be another added savings, though, not, not, not from running the heaters all the time.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I was looking at the propane cost too on that. Um, I have to, well, that's about the only thing, in the winter, in the summer, it'd be easy to figure out my propane cost, because that's the only thing that's running.
Sure.
It's not running the HVAC. So it would be, I could figure that out probably in this next month, this month of June, because we're not, they're not heating no more, they're, they're almost strictly on economizing and HVAC and cool mechanical cooling.
So i- if you went with this, uh, this system out of Helena, would, would they give us another discount if we, if we did both of them, or are these the bottom line prices on both?
No, I could always ask for discounts, everybody, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask.
And then, are all of these, everything that we're getting in each system is interchangeable with the other system?
Yeah, and also, anybody can get the parts, not just such into one company. A lot of times, these fire systems, they, like, they sell like fire suppression systems, they sell one style, that they're the only ones who can get the parts, and we're stuck with them doing any kind of repair work. Because we have to by state law to reuse them, because it's a public building for fires, kinda like elevator. We can't go into the elevator shafts or anything like that. It's not.
Yeah. Did you take into account, you know, if we do purchase the operating bank building, extra maintenance that you'll have to do there for your budget?
Well, you can handle that.
Okay. Yes.
At this point, I don't know how much, how much maintenance there'll be in that building, I mean, there's gonna be an initial cost of the, uh, some of the remodel work in back there in the, in the Bamblin space. Nah, I don't, I don't, no, I won't have a feel for that till, for probably a year of how much, if there's any.
Will you take, are we paying utilities for that, like you do?
That would have to be talked about, that would have to be an extra cost, and I'd like it for that.
Yes.
I don't know, normally, I haven't been paying for utilities outside this building.
Sure.
So, we'd have to figure that out. I don't think we've come to that point quite yet, have we, or?
No, I, I just kinda wondering what you've done in the past. You know, and I think that didn't, uh, Allison pay for her utilities? Were we, were we helping, you guys helped her, didn't you?
We, the commission paid one hundred percent.
Okay.
But what we've talked about this year is giving an extra point five mil to extension, specifically to help balance her budget and pay for those utilities.
Do you even, we don't, we got a cost on our utilities from them yet, have we? Operating the bank, we can get a cost from them, then you're gonna have an idea, yearly cost.
Right.
Yeah.
That would be a good idea, yeah, we should do that.
And, and it's my hope too, um, I do have an email from Tyler that I will forward to you, but I, it's my hope that with our remodel, we can also do something to make it a little bit more energy efficient.
I could contact Tyler and have him send me maybe a copy of all their, the last maybe two years of, of what their utilities cost. And then give an idea of where, where, and then plus, plus they give you an idea where we can find savings too.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I think we could do that.
Yeah.
Do you wanna include any of that, any, any work you, for stealing on the CIP for that hill?
I don't think so, I think with the extra on your loan, you guys were talking about, that would cover, should cover everything that we, we need to do.
Very, very good.
And then, um, safety budget, I mean, I'm just new to that budget, so I don't know everything that you guys wanna do on that budget. Um, if it covers getting safety equipment for people, or is it just covering just the meetings? Is the safety equipment up to each individual apartment to buy it? Or is it up to the safety budget to get things that need to be done for personal safety?
Well, I think it should be your recommend, well, on your recommendation, but I think it's up to the departments to provide their own.
Okay. Because it could get out of hand.
Right.
I have a question, you were talking about the safety committee, if like, personal protective equipment? Because I'm writing that policy, so I kinda need to know, um, I, I actually initially put in there that the safety committee chairman would make that stuff available, but if you want me to make it individually to departments, I can do that. If that's what Mike wants, so.
Yeah, I think.
That's good to know, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that will change everybody's budget, you know? Some of it's not so bad, and some of it's a little expensive, depending on what you need.
I think, I think solid waste, roads, my department, weeds, all have safety built into their budget, safety.
Yeah, and my department has shields and masks and, um, coveralls, all the stuff that we would need for our department is, is already stocked in our department. So, okay.
I think that's about it, except for one thing. What else can we talk about later?
Yes, counsel.
I have a question with the safety stuff. Being upstairs with our district court having open court law motion on Fridays, is this maybe something that we could look into, like a metal inspector at the door, just a small one, like at the courtroom, coming in? To put in the budget?
Probably something to have a discussion about, following the one, you know?
Or even a wand, something?
I can look under the cost or something like that. Whatever color.
You know, we should have a discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then your hours spent on safety should come out of this budget? Say your maintenance budget?
Yeah, because we charge solid waste and roads when we work there, for our hours.
Right, exactly, same thing, yeah. And then what funds, what has funded this in the past has been the savings that we have in our, um, insurance premium from the low-mon factor. I'll get a rebate check over here.
How's things going with, uh, Dr. Campbell's?
Good. Good. Um, I did a few of the things on the outside. Um, he said he was in a pain.
Okay.
Well, and I'm taking care of the lighting inside.
Right. Did we get the doors adjusted, because they were kinda sprung open here a little bit?
They're not sprung open anymore, I think it's because it's summertime.
Might have been at the winter.
Winter might have been a factor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Expansion and contraction.
Sure.
Um, and, yeah, they, they haven't really asked for anything else. I know that they have, uh, their HVAC seem to be working, but they're not working very well, I think it's because they need a charge.
Sure.
That was going on when all that was going on, and I'll, I'll address that here with my future service.
I thought I would just pass on to you that there's some comments from several people, I appreciate the work you've stayed there.
Yeah, okay. And there's only one other thing I have to go over, that's not really just my budget.
Right.
It was the, uh, health part. I had them put a data log or just update me, they put a data log and we found that there's only one line going in. And I have Josh right now working on, um, prioritizing their phone calls over their internet. But there's, we can also increase their internet usage over there. Like, uh, right now, they're currently paying seventy-five dollars a month for three, for one point five. We can go to one sixty a month, which is about double. Uh, ten meg to five meg, which might solve the rest of the problems.
What was black supposed to guarantee?
No, what's the one?
Wasn't that supposed to guarantee in the specific model?
Yeah, they're getting three to one one. That's all it was in the contract, Juan. And before, they have two, two lines coming in, I didn't talk about that.
We did.
And now, there's only one line, and that's the problem. Is that it, it, there's nothing prioritized, and so, I have Josh right now working on trying to prioritize the router for, uh, but just, uh, phones first, so they don't drop their calls or miss, you know, don't make their internet go slower too.
So if they were to increase their data, it would be an additional cost, too?
Yeah, it looks like about, what, yeah? About ninety bucks.
Ninety bucks, yeah, from seventy-five to ninety?
No, seventy-five to one sixty.
Oh.
Thanks for that.
All right, good. CIP wise, I'm gonna ask you another couple of questions, so, you don't foresee anything on the courthouse building, the detention center?
I don't.
The other county buildings that we need to?
Okay, there is one, I guess there is one, and I don't see it being an immediate urgency, but it might be in the next five years.
Okay.
Is we need to follow, think about the roof, the rubber roof.
On the detention center?
Yeah.
Something that we need to put in there.
Yeah, I, I've sealed up and repatched all the seams, or most of the seams, a lot a year ago, and it's doing well. But still, it's, it's, they did a super, they did the thinnest material they could up there, when they installed it.
So would that be a replacement?
Be a replacement, or some, or something different we need to look into.
And so you're gonna give that kind of what, of a priority? You have the medium priority?
I'm medium priority.
Okay.
I did forget about this.
You said five years?
Yeah, within the next five, right.
Okay.
I'm gonna start thinking about that one. Other than that, I don't see anything on the exteriors, roofs, I had all the roofs replaced and the two HVACs replaced about, like, two years.
Not too long ago.
With the hail damage we had.
Sure.
I worked with NICO, we get that all taken care of, taken in trees, our weeds, anything.
Alright.
Which was nice.
Yeah, if you can find time to get an estimate for that, replacement, then put that into it.
Alright.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public health.
Good morning, everyone. So, I apologize, I did not copy the budget, I sent it to Debbie and thought you would have a copy. You should have been, emailed a copy. So, but basically, um, you know, initially, we don't put wages on there anyway. Um, we just do, you know, what kinda things are changing in our department, you know, whether utilities go out. You know, some of our training costs have went down, because I've taken a lot of the trainings, um, and stuff like that. So I mainly just adjusted, uh, you know, basic operating supplies and stuff, um, for all five of my funds. So, um, for the FEP grant, or the bio grant, we did get an increase of almost three thousand dollars. Yes. Um, and then for maternal child health, we only got eighty-three dollars, but last year, if you remember right, we lost like four hundred. So, any increase in MCH is a good thing. One thing I'm really excited about is our homemaker respite program, we did get that, that back, um, again. I wrote that grant last year, like in October, and we, um, we got that grant, but we didn't know if we would get it again. Um, and we did, and that was forty-five hundred dollar grant, and our, our homemaker program is very much needed in the county. Um, we have a lot of people that could be on it. The problem that we're running into is, is with, um, Geraldine can't go over thirty hours, because she's a part-time employee. But we now have more hours because of the, the new money. And so, um, I visited with Debbie a little bit about, you know, maybe hiring somebody just very, very part-time. I have a couple ladies that would be really interested in it, even ten hours a week. But, I, I know the last couple years, the homemaker budget goes in the hole, and then we end up, you know, putting money into it from the general fund, well, that's not gonna happen now. So that's good, so that saves us whatever money that we went in the hole. So I'm pretty excited about this, I have a couple ladies that, that want to do that, so with your permission, I kinda like to pursue that. It's not gonna cost us any more money to have one more person, because they're part-time, you know, um, and the need is out there. And since, you know, we're not doing WIC and we're focusing on seniors, I think we really, that is one place I think we can really focus. I have a meeting this Friday with RMDC again, um, about a home health program. So, I don't know much about it, I know other counties have it, I've visited with other, um, program directors, and, you know, they do get some money from the state to go, for example, do med setups, or just, um, check on somebody maybe that just got out of the hospital and just needs a little, uh, nursing care. I think our community really needs that, because number one, all, all of our personal care, home health and hospice has to come out of Helena. So if we just could have just a little, small nursing service, you know, not for everybody, but a small nursing service where Heather and I could go out and see people, you know, on a short-term basis, just to get them back on their feet. Um, I think that would be a big benefit to our community, and... And so I have a meeting with them on Friday, see if I can get a grant for that. Also on Friday, um, our, our CHIP grant is due. And our CHIP grant, uh, follows our Community Health Assessment Grant, which I did in two thousand seventeen. So the next step is, is your improvement plan. Um, and you have to do it within five years. So since we don't have our, our WIC funds anymore, we're gonna do it now. We're gonna do it right now. She was thinking that we were a small county, but we're actually a frontier county, so I think I can actually get more than five thousand dollars. The gal that is the administrator of the grant, she said, "Oh, you're a small county, so I would maybe go for like five thousand." Well, we're not, we're a frontier county. So that should get us actually a couple, couple more thousand dollars. So if we can do that, that, I mean, I know that we can get the five, but, you know, whether we can get a little bit more. Nice. That'd be exciting. Yeah, and so, um, I'm gonna do, working on the budget for that and writing the grant, and then Heather's gonna do all the work. She doesn't have a lot of experience writing grants, so it'll be a learning opportunity for her as well. And, and she did do one grant that was more like an application for the senior coupons for the farmer's market. So that wasn't, you know, it doesn't all have to be about money, but that's like, there, there really isn't much money left. It really is just kinda for the seniors. And so, but that's a good thing. What other points did I want to make? So other than that, I know we talked about at my evaluation that we still have, um, eight thousand over eight thousand dollars in cash left in WIC. And to my knowledge, that is ours. We have made all of our obligations to WIC. Although I would prefer to leave that in there until their fiscal year, is, which is September thirtieth. I think that would just be a good idea. I, I don't wanna switch that money over to another fund and then have something go wrong. But we've been done with WIC for several months. I've contacted our contractor, um, registered dietitian. We're all paid up with that. We're all paid up with Karen over in Boulder. We really don't have any other expenses. So that is just money, you know, that is a cash amount of money in that fund. And I think we talked about, you know, we're losing that grant, but the amount of money that we had to put in from general was a lot, just to maintain that program. So kinda doing the pluses and the minus things, and it, it really doesn't actually work out to be that bad. So.
Didn't you say before that we were spending about eighteen thousand dollars a year to support WIC?
Yes, we were.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and the grant was only twenty-eight thousand. So then we had to put that much money in, out of the general fund, just to make that program work. Because the way WIC operates is, you know, they give you fifteen minutes per visit twice a year, and then one is like a thirty-minute visit. And some of those visits take two hours. That's not budgeted. Computer shutdowns are not, you know, uh, when the computer program doesn't work, you know, and it takes you four hours to see a client. So that's where all that extra money comes in, you know, is just problem areas. And it happens a lot with their software. It's ancient and it needs to be replaced. But that's kinda, kinda water under the bridge now. I'm, I'm glad that they're still gonna have it here. We are, uh, as soon as they, I heard they were starting on the sixteenth, so I kinda wanna go over and meet with them and just say, you know, do you have some cards we can give out? So we have kind of partnership with them going forward with that. 'Cause people, we've had a couple people stop in and say, "I need to sign up for WIC." And so we give them all the information. But now if I can just say, you know, they're at the wellness center, here's how you make an appointment, there's a card, you know, and just, like, our goals, just try to work more closely with the hospital and coordination of services, that's about, that's what it's about. Okay, immunization, that did not change, probably never will change. It's the same amount of money every year. But we did get increases in the other ones, so that, um, that's encouraging. So. I, I know we talked about a ton of stuff, um, during my evaluation, money-wise, but basically as far as just the budget and expenses go, other than just general increases, I don't expect that our budget will change that much. You know, looking at it, you're gonna have to take that twenty-eight thousand dollars from WIC out, but as I explained, we, we made that up. You know, the money we have to put in to support that program, the money we still have in there, and some of the grants that we've done are more than making up for that. So it's a matter of just kinda switching around the FTEs. So, you know, I'm just gonna help Heather work on some grants. So if, if we get the, um, the CHIP grant, hopefully we can get between five and seven thousand dollars for that. There is a couple other grants that haven't started yet. I do plan on looking into them. It's just been really wild and crazy over there, um, lately. So, um, I didn't even think I was gonna be able to make my appointments, it was crazy. Shane Grex is a big, big moneymaker for us, um, insurance-wise. And then, of course, we got that grant from the Community Health Foundation, which was awesome. And then, uh, the bike rodeo went over really well. We were reimbursed for the entire cost of that from FICMIR. And we've had so much feedback on it, we wanna do it again.
Excellent.
We might not get the grant, may or may not, but I've had so many people tell me, "I'll donate, I'll give you a bike, I'll, you know, whatever I can do to make this happen again." So, so we did pick that for a prevention activity again. We kinda set the bar pretty high because we had a lot of money. So we might be knocking on doors to see if we can get some. But it, it was, um, we actually had more people at our event than they did in Helena.
Well.
Yeah. 'Cause the Child Care Connections people, um, they go all over the state and they're the ones that give the free helmets and fittings and stuff. And, uh, she said, "Well, how many kids?" We planned on fifty kids, and we did forty-two or forty-three. And she said, "That's more than Helena had." So I think it's worth doing again. I really do, and the kids are talking about it, and so, it's a good deal. It is.
It is good, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, do you guys have any, uh, capital improvement? My building really is, is fairly sound. I know we talked about the windows. The office where I was, I moved in the back, you know. It was literally blowing through that wind, and it was freezing in there in the wintertime. But Mike replaced that. We had an estimate of about seventeen thousand dollars, which would take way too long to make up that money. In electricity and gas costs. So, um, Mike decided to just, you know, kinda do them one here and there. And that's totally fine with me. It's mainly the big ones that are leaking. The little ones are pretty sound, and, you know.
So you still have some to go yet? Do you still have some windows to go yet?
Yes, we do, yeah. He only, he only got one done.
Okay, I guess we're putting on the CIP, just that we have.
Okay, yeah, I thought I would just put it on there. You know, the original estimate was quite high from the actual window guy, you know. But Mike did a great job putting that window in there. And this is the truth. When he took the trim off, the trim, the whole, there was no nails in it. It fell out, and it wasn't insulated. Yeah, is it still here? Right? It was gonna fall out if the trim came off.
Yeah, I figured the window was already paid for.
It paid up, it's a lot warmer in there.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, anyway, but that, that is not an, that's not an urgent thing, but we can put on them. Um, capital improvement. Other than that, you know, we're good. I mean, we, we did some remodeling when I first started working there, and I think our clinic looks sharp, looks, it's clean. I, I mean, unless there's something structurally that we need, I don't think so.
Your roof isn't replaced?
Yeah.
Your gutters are good, we had them replaced here a few years ago.
Yeah.
Just replacing windows slowly, a little bit of spare time.
Right.
Very good. Can you, I mean, this tree's up on the school there. Did you send your letter?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Did you send your letter to the school yet?
Yes, I have not had a response.
No response?
No response.
Okay.
I'm glad you brought that up. I actually did some telephone surveys, um, with some of my peers, with schools that have approximately six hundred students. Most of them are run on a mill levy. If they don't, they subcontract out their nursing, and they pay between six and twelve thousand dollars a year. Yikes. I really didn't think it would be that much, because I, I was just adding up what our time was costing, you know, but I actually wasn't figuring in our benefits or anything. You know, I was just a straight across-the-board what we're paying for wages to do the school stuff. But most of those schools, um, and, and there's just a multitude, and I just picked the ones with, you know, there's eight or ten of them that were just right around our size, fifty-six to six thousand people in the county. And they said, I, I told them what, what I was doing and what we do, and they're like, "What? You do that?" And I said, "Well, it's just been that way forever." I said, "But it's just getting hard to operate when you have to take, you know, half an FTE to do the school." It's a lot of money. It is, so, um, so I'm hoping that we can negotiate some money there from the school, at least to cover our costs. Because my department is paying out all that money that the school should be paying out. And they do in every other county. So, um, some of their, uh, school nursing programs are run by a mill levy. It just depends on how your county does their mail, you know. So all of them were a little bit different. But wage-wise, for an on-call nurse that does all the immunizations, and then she's kinda on-call in case there's like an emergency, which we absolutely would be. I mean, we're there from Monday through Friday, eight to five. If the school had an emergency, I would run over there in a heartbeat. That wouldn't be a problem. But it, it's just the unbelievable time-consuming vaccination stuff. Reporting, and reporting to the state, and issuing blue cards. And they can't go to school without a blue card, and we have to issue them. Either that, or the school's gonna have to spend a lot of money training somebody. They still should be approved by a nurse, because, you know, laypeople can say, they can write down what the computer says, but the computers aren't always right. And, you know, there might be some vaccines in there that aren't right, so we need to, we have to have a nurse to guard that stuff. So my hope is that they'll get back to us, we can meet, and, um, we can come to an agreement. And that certainly will help fund our health department. So.
Oh, maybe something we wanna look at, maybe in July, not too, too long, but it's very possible that things just got crazy, graduation, the end of the school year, in June, when, you know, the brain cells are trying to reignite.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe if we wait till early July and then revisit.
Okay.
See what the response is.
Sure, sure.
Go from there. If that works. That was sent beginning of May, roughly?
Yeah, May tenth.
May tenth, okay. All right. And Ann said we should consider sending it sooner, and she's always the voice of brilliance. So we might wanna send it next week.
I agree. So, um, and as you all know, we got a forty-nine-something hundred dollar grant for, we got two new computers, we got a new refrigerator, um, and everything went up. You know, we estimated these costs a whole year ago, and then stuff went up. Our computers were gonna be obsolete, so they were coming out of the general fund this year. DIS wouldn't even work on them anymore. They were like, "You get new computers or, yeah, we, we can't do anything about it." So we did get that, um, so we got two brand-new computers. They were thirty-four hundred dollars with all the, um, programs and stuff. We got a new refrigerator, 'cause that one is a, it's making noise and kind of on its last leg. And, you know, if your refrigerator goes out and you have twenty thousand dollars with the vaccines in there, there's gone. There's, you can't recover them. Like, most of the companies will give you money back if the vaccine expires, but if you ruin it, you're on your own. There's not really an insurance policy for that, so. So we have to make sure, um, that that's going. I've, I, so the money, I asked for a generator too, but then, um, that kinda, the increase in costs kinda took up the money for the generator, and I thought, "Well, we have three generators at our house, so, you know, eh, you know, we can use one of them if the power goes out." Or we have an MOU with the hospital to transfer our vaccines over there as well.
Oh, good, okay.
I, I just thought, when I was thinking about the grant, you know, that it would be good for, um, sheltering, it would be good for American Red Cross, it would be good for us, anybody that needed a generator, you know, uh, in the county could borrow it, you know, as long as it was free. So, um, I have a few days, I, my printer's kind of going to heck. It's pretty old too, and so I thought, maybe, uh, I might ask Kevin if I can spend the rest of that money on a printer. All that has to be completed by, by June thirtieth, so that they can get the money out, you know, and, and apply it to the fiscal year. So, so I might end up getting a new printer. But this is, uh, other than the generator, this is stuff I would've had to spend out of my account. I, I would've had to, there was really no choice. So getting that money was a blessing, it really was a blessing. So.
We have three generators, the US has, we have a generator shed that we maintain over here.
Oh, okay.
We could, we could just take and bring one down and leave it down there for you if something happens and it's accessible.
Yeah. I, my, my biggest worry is that, you know, if we have an electrical storm and the power goes out for six hours, they won't maintain, they won't maintain the vaccines for that long.
We got three of them in there, we, we run them all the time to make sure they stay good, in good operation. And we, uh, we have a stabilizer over here. We can bring one down and leave it down there. No store down there, store them in generators shed.
Yeah.
As emergency services.
I know, they're nice.
Teresa, so what's your protocol on, on monitoring your, all your vaccinations? So say you're gone in the weekend or whatever, power goes out, how do you know? Is your, is your monitoring system on or?
There is an policy. And, um, so basically, you know, if we're home and the whole power goes out, I, I can't even tell you how many trips I've made down there at eleven o'clock at night. If we have a thunderstorm and our power goes out at home, and we're not even on the same grid, but it just freaks me out, I run down to the clinic to make sure that power didn't go out, so the refrigerators, you know, usually they come right back on, but there's gonna be an occasion. There could be an occasion where it wouldn't work for some reason, so.
Right now, it's just kinda you guys monitoring, keeping it on that.
We, we, they take precautions, we have big water bottles in there. So if the door is not open, it will maintain the temperature a lot longer. Within a sa, the range is pretty good for the refrigerator. The freezer. The freezer, n- not so much, it ha- it has to stay frozen, but, um, yeah, there really isn't, I have never found a protocol for that. You know, I mean, the Sheriff's Department has way too much to do, but they're on the same grid, so if they, if they lost power, we would be losing power, um, so, but it's just one more thing.
They may not know they lost power because their generator should kick off theoretically, right, Mike? They may not know that they, that you guys are out.
Well, they know, they know by the flicker of lights.
Yeah. Too much, yeah. But we've had refrigerator problems before and I, I go down there like on the weekends two or three times, just to make sure that everything's good, um.
I guess I'm, I, I'm just curious, I'm just thinking out loud here, Mike, if we upgrade our alarm systems, is that something that can be included in loss of electricity or?
Yeah, absolutely. I was just thinking about that. I wonder if NICO or somebody can come up that has some kind of monitoring system for the refrigerator, I can make a couple calls.
Yeah. I, just, just a thought.
Yeah, and then we have four or five people as a phone message if power goes out for a duration, you can start generating the alert.
Yeah, because there's times, you know, when we first get our flu vaccines, we probably have forty thousand dollars with the vaccines in there.
Yeah, so that's not worth it, protecting, sure.
It's a huge loss. Yeah, that's why I'm so paranoid about it from down there. I would rather do that than lose that vaccine. So, uh, yeah, that, that, um, we got new data loggers, which also got paid for by the end-of-the-year money. Um, you know, we aren't gonna get that money probably till July, but it's coming. Um, and, and we had to get the data loggers back in October because the other ones were expiring. So, they were four hundred and nine dollars or something like that. I did put that in that grant and we, um, are gonna get reimbursed for that as well. They do have an alarm on them, but if you're down in the building.
Sure.
You don't hear the alarm, so. And the ones that had Wi-Fi capability were really expensive, so I didn't get that. You can always switch, I guess. If, you know, if an alarm system would cost too much, you know, we could go to the Wi-Fi thing. But then, you know, there's good things and bad things about that. That's why most people didn't go with the Wi-Fi ones, because we all had to get a, all fifty-six counties had to get new data loggers because the state just wasn't gonna pay for them anymore, so we had to purchase them ourselves. And, um, very few counties went with the, the Wi-Fi ones that notify you by phone that you have a temperature excursion because if you have just a little bit of an excursion, your phone goes off, so they're a little bit too sensitive.
Maybe with time that will be perfected.
Maybe, yeah. Our old data loggers were like, I think from the nineteen twenties, I don't know. These are a lot, lot, lot nicer. So.
Teresa, so what's your thinking about phones and internet?
Oh, Laura. Well, this morning we got there, couldn't even get on. Um, it was probably nine o'clock for internet, e- before anything would even load on our computers. Um, our phones worked, but it just would sit and spin. We had no internet connection whatsoever. And then about nine o'clock, everything started winding up. So, um, it's just not a good situation. First, it was like five weeks that our phones didn't work and they seem to be better now, but now our internet is so slow and like even if you go to lunch and you come back and you turn on your computer, it just seems like it takes forever to fire it up. I don't know why. I don't know what's going on there.
So, if we went to the higher one sixty a month to get you better service, and, and I think we need to double-check our contract because I think you should be with the rest of us a hundred by a hundred. But if we paid the one sixty to get you at least increased, that would be a good thing for you, right?
It, it probably would, yeah.
And your budget is strong enough, I think it's easily affordable.
I think it is, yeah. I, I think it is, you know, because, you know, when I put all those numbers down on paper, you know, with the WIC extra money, taking, not taking eighteen thousand out of the general fund, the grants that we're doing and the free stuff we got, basically, um, to me, that's like revenue because we didn't have to take that out of the general fund, that five thousand dollars, um, so that, that's huge. And we plan on working on more senior, um, stuff and nursing service and stuff. It just takes time. I mean, this stuff doesn't happen in two months, you know what I mean? And we kind of just wrapped up the WIC thing like a couple of months ago, so we, you know, we just need time. Um, and I know we can do it, I know we can, uh, so. Uh, Heather's really a go-getter and, um, you know, she does whatever I ask her to and if she doesn't understand it, she asks questions, um, she's not afraid at all to call the state and say, "Hey, I don't get this." You know, she did a fantastic job on Midas and Midas is not an easy, that's our communicable disease program. It's not easy. Everybody hates Midas. But then when they added the flu stuff this year, it got even more inten- intense because we had seventy-five cases of flu. We just had one Friday.
Oh, my gosh.
Yikes. Uh, influenza A.
Wow.
So.
Mm-hmm.
About measles? About measles?
No, no measles, no mumps.
That would be a huge opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, we're lucky considering that it's all around us.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess the only other thing that I think, um, you know, that I would like to see that, that will affect our budget, um, you know, I did some wage, um, things that our wage thing didn't, didn't cover and a lot of my peers were really awestruck at the amount of money I was making with thirty-three years of experience and so, um, I, I really feel like that to continue to do this, um, it's a hard job, it's a big job, that, you know, I'm, I'm gonna have to have a raise this year. I, I went to bat for my staff because I, you know, I really felt like they were super underpaid, um. But now I know the program, I know what I'm doing, I, um, I have the experience now in public health and thirty-three years of experience, so, um, I think it's time.
And it wouldn't be a raise, it would be a market adjustment.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that's actually very important, um, to differentiate the word because there's a me-too clause in union contracts, so any raises given is given to everyone in the union.
Okay.
But a market adjustment based on a scientific wage matrix is allowed because it's a totally different thing.
Okay.
So, yeah, if, we would be looking at a market adjustment for you, just like we did with your staff a couple of years ago.
Right, right. Yeah, all my other jobs, it was just a raise that you got at your evaluation, um, but, um, yeah, a market adjustment for that. I, I think that I've proven that I can manage my budget the last two years have, I have done a good job with Debbie's Health, of course, but, um, you know, we, we saved a lot of money in public health for the last two years, so. Um, and I, I want to continue to do that and, um, but I just feel like I'm, you know, when I, I see what the, the Montana base wage is for a nurse without experience is three dollars more than I'm making and I have thirty-three years of experience and three years in public health now, so, um, I, I guess I just feel like I, I, I feel like it's time and I deserve it. I hope you agree.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What we'll do is we'll put that and all your requests into the June, into June.
Okay.
Bucket and then let you know.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. And good work.
Thank you, Teresa. County budget submission analysis. Thank you.
You know how much I do with this one. I have a lot of homework to do, is what I got. Curiously trying to get the wage worksheets, make sure they're up to date with all the requests and possible COAs, um, so we can start plugging that into the worksheets. I've got everybody else's budgets to start, so we can kind of get a, a good preliminary where we're at to start reeling them down and making decisions and all that, but it's proving to be, I guess, one sheet, one page done and then twenty million things interrupt me.
Sure.
So, it's, I'm working on it and I'll pay well all over again. The check thing has slowed us down. This whole fraud thing with the checks has slowed us down because we don't have him yet, he was gonna get him expedited. Haven't heard from him, I was gonna email him, but then I got to come down here, so I'm hoping by the time I go back, I'll say they're on their way because Michelle's got a hundred and some claims pending to get checks for and angry people coming to her office, "Where's my money?" Well, it's a whole process, it's not just our fault, it's not just on our end, it goes right to the department heads for taking forever to submit them and the chain of events, so we're trying. I do have the work comp. Do you guys want to look at the work comp, the comp time hours, sorry?
Thank you.
Long work comp.
We kind of, I think, you let you miss though.
Yeah, we were just trying to. We would have been, I just said the wrong thing. So, this is the last column on the worksheet, I couldn't find one that just specifically report just with the comp time. So, it's got everybody's sick vacation hours and if they were to be paid out, it shows the twenty-five percent. But you guys wanted to look at the comp time, um, didn't we update the work comp policy to have no more than one hundred and twenty hours?
It was eighty.
Oh, is it up, eighty? Okay.
Sorry, it had eighty, I already updated it, or it started at one-twenty and we updated it.
Okay, I think that's the statute maximum, I think, then, as well.
Okay.
So, if you look in the, as of last paper, because we haven't done this one, payday, there's quite a few that are over the eighty. And it's scary because some of these people that are over are working their butts off. All these things coming up, means public works, um, solid waste, this big one, road. Money getting up there, a little bit down, the budget season coming up, that's gonna be another. So, it's mostly the road, public works and maintenance, you know, putting all this extra time of all these projects.
And what's scary with that is we're going into busy season.
Mm-hmm, so it's not gonna go down for a lot of these.
Mine wasn't so much projects. Mine's been a lot of, uh, check for.
Yeah.
After-hours, weekends.
And what the solid waste, and how solid waste put you over there too.
It did a little bit, but it was, it was, it was, this year's just been a really weird year.
But outside of that, most people are within the, the eighty, pretty good.
I see a couple of these that should be talked about solely in a closed door.
Yeah.
Because of HIPAA.
But, you know, there's a lot of us up there too with our lot of large amounts of vacation sick leaves too, which the vacation is government's active, so we kind of keep that, we don't deal with that till the end of the year. We have a couple stragglers that we're, we granted extensions to for this last year, they'll be taken over. And sick time, it's just, they only get twenty-five percent when they leave, if they ever leave. But all of these amounts show on our books as a liability. So, it's just a difference between the, the balance sheet and the financial statements where they're reported and how they show and affect us. Not so much the cash, but it does, if somebody leaves or retires, these have a potential for a huge impact on our cash balance for a particular fund, so.
So, what's hard is it's, it's easier to absorb it in something like the general fund, but if you are solid waste, you have to carry that all by yourself just with your budget.
And I do, that's part of my budget, as you guys noticed, that I have to keep in within my budget is I have to factor in anybody who might resign, quit, as talked about, leaving, moving and what the cost will be in the county should they do that. Rather than each budget when they acted, when they're paid out, that employee benefit line comes out of the general fund and replaces that in those individual budget line items, as a fund. So, except for solid waste, and general fund is just a matter of switching from one to account to another to cover that liability. So, it doesn't affect our budget, so like, Teresa were saying, I'm done, for example. You think she's got, I would just transfer out my employee benefit fund to her, her account. So, it does that up.
Yeah.
So, I tried to, last year we came close to reaching the full with Dana and Amy and different people retiring last year. We came close to using the full fifty thousand. I kept it out because there's some people up there that are looking at retirement for medical issues, different things. So, I kept it up there, I hope I have enough.
It's a fifteen thousand.
Because if you don't, then that's a negative impact on our budget too as well when we go pay them out. It's, it's nice to never use it or use it all because it helps our reserves in the general fund, but it's there if we have to. As you see, some of the numbers are up there. It's scary to me, I want to put more, but I'm trying to, I'm just trying to be a little conservative and hopefully not this year, that they'll take some more vacation, be gone a little more if they can or want to, aren't able, so.
Well, that, that helps us with planning, um, a lot. Probably a follow-up letter to your memos that have been going out, it's not a bad idea from the commission. But, yeah, thanks for this, that helps.
Shocking, when they put out tolls for hours.
Most are, when you look at it, there, there's only six that are above.
Yeah.
The eighties, so, you know, that's not bad, we're more than sixty-three employees.
In thirteen years I've been here, those departments, that's typical.
Yeah.
In the winter, it adds up with all the snow moving and in the summer fixing roads and we have major flooding, which thank goodness we didn't have too much of this year, as is in the past. People are busy cleaning up from all the winter and, you know, that adds to the dumping of the garbage and so they always have extra hours. Yeah, and that's predictable. If we didn't have those hours, I would be surprised, truthfully.
Now, with our FMLA policy,
Mm-hmm.
um, it's comp time first then vacation, or is it, no, it's?
It's sick and then the employee has the option to use vacation and comp.
Okay.
But it's kind of, we do allow them the discretion, they might want to keep their sick if they only got it twenty-four hours. It used to be a struggle as a single mother, that was one that was hardest to keep up. So, if I got any comp or vacation, that's when I would use those in lieu of to try to balance out the, what I had.
And using sick since we reimbursed that back only at twenty-five percent, it's probably getting used first.
A lot of people like to use that first.
Great.
As much as possible. Now, we try to encourage them to keep at least twenty-four or thirty-two. Because of the work comp thing, you have to pay thirty-two out of your pocket to be hurt before the work comp program kicks in for lots of wages. So, that's a good thing to use if you have that, if something happens, so we kind of try to make sure people use that, but, um, most of us, we do good, really, a lot of us don't really use it down. And keep pretty good, healthy balances.
Yeah.
Most of us.
And, you know, again, six over, that's not bad.
Mm-mm, so. And of course, then you've got the part-timers who look like they don't have much, but for them, when they're only part-time, they get maybe an hour to a month. You know, that's gonna work, so.
Yeah.
They would have to use their sick or vacation time if they were to, because they're new.
All right, well, thank you for this.
Any questions on it?
Oh, thanks, babe.
Concerns? Um, obvious.
Not yet for me.
But I'm working on budgets, I think Michelle's gonna help with payroll today. But I'm working on budgets, I think Michelle's gonna help with payroll today until she has checks. And I'll put her in charge of getting all payroll, so I can really focus on getting some of the budget stuff. And I got stuck in the sheriff's office with making all the changes and additions, they got to their contract for the little graveyard versus shift graveyard. Standby weekend, some of those changes, working it into their budgets. Home reports to figure their hours, we did some for the progressive union, but we didn't do like the afternoon shift, now there's a difference this year from 45 to 40 to 35. Last year was the same for both, so I gotta factor that in, and home reports, still look at all the hours from fiscal year '17, because it's a full year, trying to go back, so make sure.
Don't worry about paying it retro, though.
No, but, but for budgeting purposes, so that they don't show that they're gonna go running the negative of wages, because that was Brandon's fear, he was guessing. So I want to be sure we include those in them, with the COLAs, and the anniversary increases, because that, all those line items can affect the taxes. And if I don't, they could show their wages, they go way over, and not have enough, we don't budget for it, so it's better to break even on that than not have enough. I did that one year, and I won't make that mistake twice.
Yeah.
Because it's didn't go over well. So I'm working on that, and I got stuck with theirs, but pretty much everybody else's is much ready to go, just need to just print them, distribute them, and plug them into my budget prep module, so we can get some numbers running. And then transfer everybody's budget to the budget module, so we can get a true printout of what our budgets are looking like compared to last year. And I'm gonna include special requests with notes in there, because then that way we know we can or can't do it, or modify it, as we all.
Would you stay with us while we have the analysis discussion? Because I have some questions about that.
Okay.
All right.
I brought the little email that you sent me with questions.
Oh, good, because I don't remember what all my questions were.
There was a lot of them. So as you do, I'll make them one by one and
Sounds good.
answer them. As I go.
I share that with you guys, but what I do with, what we've kind of developed over the years, Debbie and I, is in going through the budget with each step, one with our reviews, and also building the budget, is I just send her a massive email with all my questions, and then when she has time, she delves into it. There's no need for her to stop everything. But I also try and give her enough time, so that it's not one of those things where
Like I was wrong with when I'm looking at stuff, oh, she asked this question, I can answer it, so we are and it works, and it's kind of a check and balance, to know that you guys have what you need, or if I've missed something, it keeps me on track. So that we cover all our bases well, and it's worked good. So if you guys have questions, please, don't hesitate to let me know, because there's so much information out there, it right now my head just feels really I'm overwhelmed, because there's just so much right now to start throwing in. Once I get into it, it goes, it's just right now, but there is that's why I was trying to get done ahead of time. That's why I was wanting some of our stuff ahead of time, if I could. Little easier, little chunks than big mouthful.
So do you feel that the information that Brandon's got is giving them a pretty different treatment, I just like it?
Well, we tried to do the wages close, so I, I think he's good with that. Overall, the public safety budget, I think, it balances if you're looking at bottom-line fund. But if you go into some of the individual accounts, public safety has me a little concerned, because when I compared what they had budgeted with what they'd used and what they're wanting, just on what they budgeted last year, what they're wanting for this year, there was a hundred and like 53 jump, 153,000. So, and they haven't even reached that budgeted amount in the actual expenses, just for operating, not counting wages. So I know we have another month, but this is typically when we start seeing anything and everything. People start using up their supply budget money. They don't, you know, we don't need it, don't use it, it helps your cash reserve. Uniform stuff, gone all year, now suddenly we're getting four and $5,000 worth of claims for uniforms and badges and things. If you don't have to, if you needed it, you should have been getting it along and not waiting till the end of the year just to use it. So those are things we see over and over every year that concern me a little bit. Because really, the idea is if you don't spend it, that's how your cash reserve will build up every year, you can budget for 200,000. You don't need to spend that 200,000, that's that much more cash is in your balance to get to your reserves as we move into the next year. And it's just been, it's been hard with public safety to do that. And that's why it's always every year, piecemeal, they use what they got, and they never can get that reserves up there. It's old mentality that they were beat into their heads, so to speak, years ago, you don't use it, you lose it. And it's been hard for them to understand the concept, no, you don't use it, you don't lose it, it stays in your cash reserves. Or in your cash and accounts towards your reserves for the next year. Well, that's why we try to encourage you to keep your budget amount the same. If this is working, and so far it's showing this year, try that a year or two, and that'll help you get your reserves building up. But
Sure. Are you gonna plan any, like, bulletproof working meetings?
Yeah, we'll have to, when I get all this stuff going in, because there's some, until I get the numbers in there, it looks good right now individually, but to get it all in, is a hard guess, especially with revenues, if we're going with the same we did last year as our preliminary, before we get our evaluations, which is what Lynn was trying to do, which we've tried to do from year to year to year, but some budgets just, we have to change them, thinking they don't have the ability to support that.
Okay, good.
So, I see one, one's Amy.
Thank you. And that's kind of one of the things I wanted to do, is start our working meetings to get an overview of what we're looking at. I think it's about 700, maybe 8,000 dollars in special requests so far. And we don't have it, so what do we whittle down, what do we prioritize as number one? Bunch, number two bunch, number three bunch. And I think that's important, I would also personally like to request that we not adopt a preliminary budget that doesn't have a significant balance. I don't want to repeat the past years of commissioners did this, did that. No, it's your budget, it's your responsibility, and you have a memo from April that says you need to submit a balanced budget. And then also the special requests, I wonder about maybe having a supplementary memo to the preliminary budget, rather than putting those in the budget, because I think there's, we know that, you know, we've heard it in our meetings, I don't read that. Okay, so we publish a preliminary budget that has the special request, that we have a memo and verbally said, these are just requests, we're gonna address them later. The minute they appear in the preliminary budget, there's an assumption by two of the department heads that, oh, this is my money. This is my money, it's the public's money. But I'm just wondering about how, how to keep the peace, how to better communicate with everybody, keep the peace, and at the end of it, come out with the most equitable, balanced budget we can. So, that's why I asked you to stay, Debbie, that's my line of thinking, and if it's not doable, let me know, but if it is doable, is it a good idea, do you guys agree? And if you don't, what's a better idea?
I suppose I say something, I know.
I don't think, I don't think so, and I guess what I was hoping you'd do is maybe let us have the discussion, but guide us if we get on track.
Okay.
Track us, so that everybody's on the same page as far as understanding. And add any brilliance you can to our discussion, should it be needed. Does that sound fair? And one of the things that Maple does is, your first training as a new commissioner, there's no budget. The idea is they're likely to go through a budget season, and then second training, you get the budget, and it's heavy on the budget. But you do have the experience from the other side, which is, I think, can be invaluable. Mike and I have been through this before, and Debbie, this is where you shine, so...
Turn off of them.
Right?
You're gonna do it on my sleeve? That's just too much. You do them on my sleeve, I think.
One thing that would be valuable, as we've been talking about the CIP, we should give, and I know you have that from last year, Debbie, a list of everybody's computers, and who it is that needs new ones, who's getting close.
Doug did that.
Doug did that?
Doug did that.
Okay, if he could update that for us, that would be great, so we get an overview. It helps that Teresa was able to get that funding from the state.
Yeah, because that'll be important. You know, like our printer, we're gonna use the old, the one that's like ours down here, because ours gets worn out.
Yeah, so if that could add to it, we need
Computer scammers. To swap out the cords, and then get Josh to reallocate the IPs and things for it. But it just, you know, we did that, trying to boost it with that maintenance kit, but it's kicked right back up, and it seems like it's going through more ink than it should, and the print isn't very good, so that's some of that, yeah, I agree with that on that.
Yeah, I think we need a whole list.
And then part of that strategy and planning, every three years, like Sheriff does with their vehicles, these are obsolete, we need to update them type of thing.
Right, yeah.
We just haven't had the time to plan strategically for some of that, it just has been go as you flow, dire emergencies.
Right, to be able to plan rather than just react is so much better.
Causes less stress
Yeah.
for everybody. Well, here, you know, wait, you know, just like the check situation, that's affected a lot of us. Irrigation district, fire districts, the school, hospital, they've all been coming to me, what are you doing, what are you doing? And so we've created some special within our system for Bev and them, because they were doing it manually, so if they order from Safeguard, we're all getting the same checks, and we can number them, it's in the check mapping table, so that it's easier for Bev, they clear electronically, rather than her manually entering, because somebody ordered 2,000 checks and don't want to buy new ones from 10 years ago.
Sure.
We're trying to work smarter on that, too, you know, you just but we're reacting instead of planning.
Right. So I was just adding Teresa and Mike's special requests, since we didn't really have those.
I think, too, I'm gonna email everybody that has a CIP, and remind them they need to do that budget as well, because like last year, nobody budgeted anything. They spent some this year, had to do budget amendments, and I'm like, well, I thought I should have more than that you do in your CAD, but you didn't budget for it, so which just makes work on the backside for me, to give them spending authority, as long as they have the cash or revenue that has come in to cover that. I need to make sure, you remind me that I should do that, when I brought up this CIP. Because that's part of, they're not part of the mills, but that's part of our budget.
So, question for you guys, for the health budget. Teresa turned in a budget that's the same as last year, but I wonder if we want to add the $1,200 to the utility services, to pay that additional internet, and include that into her budget submittal? She's nowhere near the 3% at this point. Does have an increase in the revenue. And then the other one would be the the 10 hours per week, she did get $6,000 more for respite care, and that's what that would be for, so it would actually pay for it. So I'm wondering if we want to add that to the salaries at this point.
Did she give a rate of pay?
She didn't, no, and it would probably be in close to Jerry's.
I have to run some numbers, see what we should put up. In the more like
I would think if she got that extra, we can put it on there, plus she's also was getting 18 out of general fund, she's not getting this year, right?
Right, and if you look at her revenue, she's, she budgeted to add to the general fund in revenue She's actually already, instead of 37, actually brought in $53,000. It's an increase of 17 grand alone, right there, so the income loss from WIC, not including the expenses paid, expenses paid, but that's way offset now by the 17,000. So, and that's not including any of the grants that she's got here in the list.
So when are we gonna meet to determine her request for a market adjustment?
That would be done, our memo says we'll meet at the end of June, we'll have all of them together. So that's why I didn't mention that one, because I see that as a special request.
Right.
And I would say we would, we don't have it at the end of June.
No, I'm not sure if she looked at the matrix, I'll have to get Michelle to look at the matrix. That was another question, she wanted to know, do you still want her to update every year with the two and a half inflationary increase, like we did last year? She's made me ask that, I keep forgetting.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good practice, if we're gonna use that as a tool for when we hire people and want market adjustments, we'll have to have it, so we just want to and I'll make sure she does that.
They're good with you guys?
Yeah.
Because if she wants to And that's part of, I think, of the instructions in there, too, is some of that might require her to update her job descriptions, so that we can reassess it for the matrix and the point system, and how they were banded with that, I think that's part of what Dick's, so you could, it could be a moving, living, flowing document, which might mean a next step up in the bands.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to do that. Well, she's done that, she asked me, and I I'll make sure she does that.
And Kelsey, while you're taking notes, do you have any questions or want clarification, just shout them out.
Okay.
So what would, would you guys like to just go down the list?
Yeah, I think that
Okay.
makes sense to me, just start drilling down.
So Kirk has asked for an additional 500, be added to his budget for substitute judge. This year, there's really been no decrease in revenue, although we did say we'll expect perhaps a third reduction. But for this year, that would be probably one of those that would be a pretty easy yes when we come to the discussion, but that is a special request. Clerk Recorder has asked for $10,000 for voting machines, that's a requirement by the state, so it's not really something we can say no to. I did ask Doug if there's an emergency, you know, that we have an answer right away, he said, no, can we figure your process?
Is there a reimbursement maybe coming from the state?
Yeah, my understanding is, the cost is about 60,000, 10,000 would be our accounting's cost. The rest is gonna be reimbursed by the state. Yeah, my understanding is the cost is about 60,000, 10,000 would be our accounting's cost, the rest is gonna be reimbursed by the state. He he wants $2,500 for two new computers. I would like to see his list and just compare that with the other departments before we say yes, but we certainly need to be addressing the old computers, we do know from last year we have quite a list. And then he's got the money out of records preservation to pay for a new plotter, so that seems to me it's already in his budget. That would be one that we could say yeah, because he already has the money. Any thoughts on any of those yet?
So on his new plotter, he just asking us to allow to do that on this year's budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's just following the procurement policy.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay. Staffing discussion, we need to have that. Sanitarian, but there were no other special requests, we're gonna have to, I think, continue to have conversations with Sean and Nicole and Mary and see how we're gonna go forward and see how that's gonna affect the budget. I can see where we would be spending more for a contractor in the summer and then mightily less in winter. Like he said, perhaps it will even out to be what we have going, any thoughts on that Debbie?
Just don't have enough data to really back that up, do we?
Uh-uh.
No.
Uh-uh, not yet, I know he's doing a lot now, like he said, cause it's summer, I know the house is 38, I seen Wells going in just from here to home. But yeah, that was a hard one. Because it'll just be, till we can quit drilling and the ground freezes, we get through this, is it gonna taper off? I, I don't know the other end of the county well enough, so I don't know when it'll happen enough. You know, or is this gonna be like this for two, three years where I just don't know.
Yeah.
That was a hard one.
So, maybe just ongoing conversations.
And I know sanitary was a higher paying position amongst all the department heads, so I know it was kind of up there in the matrix, there were some that are over the median in our matrix, I'm not sure if that was one of them.
Yeah.
So, is Sean comparable? I just don't know yet, like I said, is this too soon? I might be able to go back and look at Julie's wages and hours. But she spreads so much out over the year versus what Sean right now is dealing with versus when it's slower. I just don't know if that'll help. I mean, I'll, that's one of the things I'll look at as I go.
Okay, if you can keep monitoring that, then I think we can keep having those discussions with, with those guys, we can try and at least get a vision.
And I know right now he's borrowing our supplies, so he says they already owe you favors, oh. I need something. So there might be a case of paper come out of there.
Right.
Are we still planning to, you know, as Janaya leaves and whoever that new person will be, still planning to keep her there, right?
Well, yeah, most definitely, and I think what we need to do is put together, so on page three, I put together all the staffing requests that we've had. One of those, that's, if you add those hours, it's about 80 hours, that's two FTE. One of those is Janaya. And I still think we need to write a letter to Corta Lane and tell him that we want to keep her the same. But anyway, so one of those is Janaya, I think we need to discuss another FTE to help with the other items there. GPS, GIS, secretarial, finance assistance, somebody to help with the public works, Mary's got 473 hours of comp time. I think one of the things we need to do is get her some assistance with the, the office work. And she's paid too much to be doing the office work, so those things all come into it, how do we make it work? And that's in the monetary request, that's all the special requests at this point before today. And you will see 47,000 FTE GPS, GIS assistant. That is, that would be extra to Janaya who's already a payroll for you.
For sanitary, are we looking, are we looking for, for sanitary or are we gonna stay with the contract, with Sean?
That's the question, so there's a lot of different models out there. We could continue with Sean on contract if his annual would be what we would pay a full-time sanitarian. Or, we could work with Sean part-time and he could supervise a sanitarian in training or an intern. Perhaps Sean could work when he gets the lay of the land, part-time, Jefferson County has just a part-time sanitarian. Perhaps he could be part-time with a more full-time assistant. Well, an assistant is gonna make vastly less than a full-time sanitarian. These things could all actually pencil out to not only get the job done, but savings to the department.
Yeah. Well, Sean's doing a great job, right?
He's well-liked.
Yeah.
The public, I've gotten nothing but positive feedback.
Obviously, like he finds a way to make, make it work for those folks when they have a little bit of issue.
Yeah, yeah.
I like that.
He walked up to one guy who was having issues, and he sat down and he said, so what can we do to make this work? A great attitude. So, yeah, I think he's been a tremendous asset. But I think, I, I think the sanitarian budget is just a question mark this year, every year we have one, this year it's the sanitarian budget.
It is, you know, I really, I really don't think we're gonna fully know until we probably get close to a year's worth of of what, you know, doubt, so to speak, of how, how it's worked out. To see what that peak is and then what that slowdown is and and see where it balances out at the end of the year, I mean, we can make several guesses.
Yeah.
But I just don't think we have the information to do that.
The state has asked him to take on an intern. How lucky are we? We're gonna get, you know, an extra body. It also shows how much respect he has from the state, but also, how can that all be part of?
So do we have an intern working with him?
Do we get that person or nothing then?
I think so, or it's nominal, interns are pretty cheap. Yeah, it's, and it's an education opportunity. And it turns out she's from Townsend. So, there's a lot of opportunity here.
Well, that's gonna help us, that's, that's what I was thinking, is, is, is we can go with him if we get the right person. We could go with, you know, if we get the right assistant, we could go with him more on less of a full-time, more, more part-time than full-time.
Sure.
Than what we've got him right now, if we get the right person in here, then come winter time, maybe he doesn't need to be here on the contract much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be handy.
Yeah. So we might wanna just reserve a little bit from Pilt for just in case on that one. Just in case there needs to be an infill, infill because of all the question marks.
True.
Yeah. Health, I just went through that one. Attorney. So, we're gonna know on Friday, I sent you guys that agenda as well, on Friday about the victim witness grant, I do have, and I sent this to you as well, an email, thank you Debbie, email from Brett Simons, he works for Representative Gina Forte. So, from our last Justice and Public Safety Committee meeting, we went through all the federal legislation that's come out. Vala was one of them, it came out in full, and what his email said is unless there's something going to the state or a match of the state, Vala's been, is on the verge of being funded fully, so it has been funded fully by the House. It is now stuck in the Senate, it's expected to be signed with, but it makes its way through the Senate. And that is on a fast track, what that means with our Congress, we don't know yet, but I'm anxious to see what happens Friday, I don't expect that we're gonna do another 30,000 deficit, $30,000 deficit. So Debbie, before we got that grant for the full amount, how did the funding work for the victim witness advocate position? Can you kind of fill that hole in?
The victim witness was two-thirds grant, and then the other third was from the county attorney.
Okay.
So three days a week, she did victim witness in, in, in concept, and then two days a week was for, us to help Corey with caseloads and non-victim stuff, as I understand it.
Okay.
But he was kind of, whatever she did, he had her do, she did.
Okay. So we'll know more on that then Friday.
Yeah, I was kind of playing with the numbers, and it might be a flip, if it doesn't go through, it was looking more like two days victim witness and three days county attorney, so it was gonna be a flip in the general fund versus victim witness, if what she gave me goes through, and it wasn't, it was only like 31,000 way down, is what she had got, so I kind of went on that assumption just to see what it would do, and I was, I was a little shocked.
Yeah.
So, it would be a negative impact on the general fund in that respect, well, with the victim side of things.
Okay.
But yeah, that was, I was curious where that was going.
Right.
And I know she's asking about her surcharges and things that she gets. That's been a tough one. Because that's always supplemented her budget.
Surcharges from?
Well, the victim witness, there's certain, she gets some fees, like from I forget what she explained it, when there's a case that come in from that she gets a portion of, whether it's just a court, district court, she gets a little bit of fee from the state or something to help offset.
Oh, okay, does that go to the county attorney?
It stays in her victim witness.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's kind of like, I explained to her, is it supplemented, the shortfalls in her cash and her grant. Like some of these extra airfares she's had to pay out the last couple of years, it's helped offset that, because the fees aren't very much.
Okay.
So it's not helped her, not helped her budget like she hoped.
Okay.
She's gonna be, she's not gonna have any reserves basically, it's just in her about flush.
Okay.
Yeah, she struggles with that this year.
Okay. So, we'll have to keep an eye on that, I'll give you guys an email on Friday with what happens. We are voting on it on Friday, so we'll have an answer, whatever that is. So, where Corey was overpaid in his salary, it's about, and correct me if I'm wrong on the number, about $16,000, but seven has already been repaid. So for 2015, it's 16, it's about 10,000, and that's what'll help him for that software.
Right.
Is that right Debbie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Plus, it'll be a savings to the county side of things, with the reduction in his pay, then there's not so much work comp unemployment.
Oh, okay.
So that saves on the employer's side.
Okay.
In those respective accounts.
So he had asked for a CIP for expert witnesses, CIPs have to be for capital, do they not? Okay.
What, what, that's what I've tried to explain to him before, and it's just, it's, it's hard to get the concept. You would just need a different line item in his budget, working budgets to spend for that. It's like, we're looking at a separate account within the general fund for legal, it's not within the commissioners, it's not within mine or anybody else's, but it's just a separate account for legal work that we can set up, so it's gonna be used for anybody that has attorney cases. So it's kind of gonna be the same thing within, in his, we just add a separate object code within his budget for some of that.
Okay.
Knowing that if he doesn't spend it this year, next year he budgets the same amount, he's guaranteed that next year, it's not like if I don't spend it, then I double it next year because I didn't spend it. Kind of concept, it's just carry forward until you need it.
So if there's some leftover money in the budget, he could start funding that line through his own working of the budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, he wants us, reduce spending on supplies and put 100 towards that object or this or that type of thing, he could.
Okay.
Whether he does it in his account or, you know, kind of like we did, create a separate line item.
And perhaps a line item to help with the victim witness, what's missing from the surcharges? Okay.
If Brooke, it would be easy because she's got her own fund. General fund, that one gets a little more tricky.
Yeah.
And there's ways for it to show.
Okay.
Just have to think outside the box, just a little bit.
So he also wants new computer, two new printers and a new scanner, can we add that to the list that Doug's gonna put together? Or, we're gonna ask Doug to put together the printers? We should have an analysis of that from all departments anyway.
And I, because I think he's been working with Josh and getting some of that, because you know, they came in and sold all our computers out, so I think they have a pretty good idea who's got what, I think he's working with that on that one.
Okay.
I will send him the email for a few of the stuff.
And then what I would like to do is analyze all departments at once.
Some of the issue is the software too, some of us have older software.
Right, yeah.
Something between computer software not being supported.
Right.
Didn't he say some of his software is outdated?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah. And some of that might be handled with that software balance, maybe one of the reasons he needs to do software is because the old software is outdated. One of the things that has hurt his budget is the cancellation of the interlocal agreement with the city last year. That was a hit of $18,000, there wasn't a corresponding reduction in spending, so that was absorbed by the rest of the general, general fund, so we'll have to watch that this year, that's about what, million and a third roughly? Okay. Oh, BERS litigation, so we, if Pilt is fully funded, we have said we will put $100,000 into the BERS litigation fund. I do think that should absorb the $5,775 he wants for his secretarial services. Because that's what it's for, one of the things. And then the $19,000 from law enforcement, I think that's great, I think I'd like to discuss it when we get to law enforcement though. Maintenance, watering cost increase in the full-time for staff, we got the $9,000 for Mike today. And then the CIP, we, we used to actually just automatically put $60,000 a year into that, Mike's asking for it looks like a max of 25 added. So that, that helps Pilt. Finance, that's part of the staffing discussion we need to have. Community development and planning.
Can we, can we, can I just for a minute? So he's talking, he's talking about the fair's impression systems need to be updated.
Yeah.
Who would want to address that out?
Um, I put that, that was the 20,000 I added to his CIP.
Okay.
Yeah. And then he'd have a cushion with the other 5,000, because he's got the 18. And then of course, if something huge broke, you know, we'd have to use Pilt, like the elevator breaks, we'd have to use Pilt to pay for that. So we need to have some kind of a, a reserve, Pilt in the past has always been used for unforeseen situations and capital expenditures. Except for a few small exceptions, one being our insurance.
Yeah, I think, I think you usually do that the first one. Yeah.
Yeah, right away, it's the first thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else on that? And we can come back to any of them, too.
Sure.
All right, so community development, planning, staffing issue, but also, there's about his fifteen hundred dollars that's in the general fund. So this is the only fund outside of the general fund that funds the general fund. Everything else, like the detention center, for example, all revenue from the detention center stays in the law enforcement budget. Planning's revenue helps out the general fund. And that's from years and years ago, long before my time. But I would like to make a switch that that money actually goes from general fund back to planning, because that's what it's worth.
And then I'm sure how, how, who tells how to split it?
It's a percentage, I guess. It's eleven percent of the planning fees.
Like, like years before my time, I'm just never, because planning and sanitary were one.
Exactly.
Oh, that was all for me. So yeah, it's been out there forever, never even-
So I think that's it. We may still have to kind of look at using something out of Wheatland Turning Lane from Pilt. But I think that budget looks really good this year. Detention center, I think, yes? No, that's district court. DC is district court. So Val would like an increase in staffing hours and new furniture for the courtroom. I think both of those should be the requests. Staffing hours, I think she wants to go from currently sixteen to twenty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
With an extra six weeks at full-time for the training. I got the hours here, it's like thirteen, thirty-eight hours.
Okay.
Is your total. Now I only have to watch, with half insurance.
Right. Oh, right, yeah. Yeah.
Can you tell me again, I was, I kind of got behind here on the hours. She wants an increase from sixteen to twenty-four, or something?
Correct. Currently, it's at sixteen, and that is in our list of, of staff to discuss, to discuss. So it's just as an extra eight hours, and it has sixteen. I should have just looked on my piece of paper here. So yeah, sixteen to twenty-four is the request, plus the six weeks additional.
The halftime would be twenty hours a week. That puts, like, two thirds. Plus those full-time weeks, so I haven't heard back on our audits of the trust yet, so I don't know where all my exceptions to and things went.
That'll be important.
If we're still looking at it, or if there's with the trust, and they're-
Before we can make a decision, we have to have those answers, because that's where, yeah.
I, I got those forms scanned, and I'm going to send them to Erin, with like the email. That explains, you know, we didn't do this last time we bargained, and here's what we've encountered with our audit. We need to have those hours with the exceptions filled out, so that when they audit us again, but the trust wants this, then we have our backup. Backup documentation, like we did to begin with, why we aren't doing it. Otherwise, it, it's either we're darned if we do and darned if we don't, and it all falls on me. Because with their system, there is nothing that they give me that I can report and verify these people are meeting the minimum standards of thirty hours. There's no report. I have looked, 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 whenever they set me up, and why they did what they did with us, I have no idea. But it's become a constant battle. And it's good insurance, so I hate to say we're going somewhere else, because then we'll all suffer. But they don't have a very good process.
When you get that, if you let us know, we need to have a discussion with Cory, since he negotiated for that last time, and make sure that we have what you need in writing, and he can help make sure that that's in the right legal leaves. I think that would be important.
And then have it, and it just kind of fell out the park, and the trust told me, when I said, I wanna know, and I sent him, well, that's something that your local office would have done, would have been viewed.
Yeah.
And I think it was all the tension going on at the time.
Yeah.
It just was missed, or I don't remember who's job it was, but that's some local details that-
Keep the-
Yeah.
So extension, we did just get an email from Allison requesting point five mil, talk with her about that, too. And that's to cover the increase in salary plus the utilities. May not be enough. Public Works, I think Eric up to full-time, and that used to be paid until a year before last year, thirty thousand. There was a deal made, discussion at a commission meeting, Nick Kortholz and, with the sheriff's office at the time, and Mike Myers came together, and the detention center, or law enforcement was asking for more hours from Eric. They, well, from somebody. They wanted maintenance to hire a part-time employee. They would pay thirty thousand dollars towards that employee to get guaranteed hours working in the law enforcement site. So the agreement was, they would pay thirty thousand dollars towards that employee. Mike hired Eric, Eric was full-time. What happened the year before last is law enforcement said, we're not gonna pay that thirty thousand anymore. Mike said, I'm not gonna fight about it. Eric was reduced to thirty dollars per week, thirty, so he kept his health insurance for his family. And now Mike would like to bring it back up, because the workload is there. This will fall in the general fund, unless we want to talk with law enforcement about that. So that's that.
And that's, it says Public Works?
That's, that's maintenance.
Oh, sorry. I get too confused, yeah, because maintenance is not here. Okay, so that's maintenance. Public Works, that's the part-time assistant for Mary. I think she said ten hours a week is what she could use, somebody to just help her with paperwork. Yeah, sorry about that. I wondered why there was no space between them and solid waste. I didn't really know that way. So solid waste, then, needs a loan to balance this year. I think a Bureau of Investments loan is a great idea if they'll do it. I think those are capital expenditure loans. Perhaps bonds? I don't know how that works. That's one of my questions I put to Debbie. Do you know anything about bonds?
Well, I've taken a couple of the classes that the GFOA offers online, and I don't know enough about them.
Do you have any thoughts, do you have any thoughts on how we could offer a loan to solid waste, other than Pilt?
I think the Board of Investments, because they kind of have made updates, changes to the sites, so it could be kind of a stretch. It's infrastructure, sites, maintenance.
Okay.
Which, you know, Bureau, you know, the Board of Investments, I think they do stuff like that. Our buildings, with extension, extension building, and what we were gonna do overall here, four or five years ago, actual new building, first, first of rescuing all those to be-
So she'll need to put in an application and at least try it, is what you're kind of saying?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know if that's been done yet?
I don't know.
Do you know if anything's been done on that yet?
I don't have the, the application and the information, so.
And then that, that, that board meeting, that meeting got canceled.
Oh, you're right.
So I don't think that they've done anything.
So it won't be-
From what I looked through, though, it looks like, it looks like everything that we're looking for money for is all qualified for.
That's what I, that's what I think, too.
It looked like that was there was fun, to fund programs, or that you were unable to fund, but you have revenue coming in to make the payment on the fund. On the loan. So it looked to me like that, that's basically what it was set up for.
Okay, cool.
So what I looked, the application, it looked to me like that was what we could use, you know, pretty easily.
Would we use it to pay for, like, the canisters? And then use that, that other money to balance, and then we'd use that BOI loan to pay for?
Well, I think you'd use it to, to, you, you can use it to pay off that, to, to cover that bad debt, and then your, your revenue you have coming in pays that loan off.
Okay.
As long as you have a guaranteed source of income coming into the fund, I think you're okay. That's kind of the way that I would, we'd have a guaranteed source in the assessment, plus whatever else we pick up. So I think that we'd be pretty solid, from what I, and you can pay for the canisters. Any of the work, the road department did, I would think that you could take that out of there. The buildings that Mike and Eric built, you could take that out of there. I think you can just about cover everything, even through the expansion program.
Okay, cool.
That's kind of the way I look, depending on how much they're, they're, they're interested, they're willing to go into it. If they owe it, I think they should just try to get a loan to cover it, and then that frees up our Pilt. Actually, it gives us a cushion on Pilt, is what it does, because-
But then bonds are hard, I think, because you have to have somebody that buys, who wants to buy the bonds and take that risk. I don't know with solid waste, if that's how much, who the investor would want to be to take on that risk. If the returns aren't real good.
Yeah.
You'd have a hard time getting investors to say, I'm gonna purchase this, because I'm not gonna get any money back, or I'm gonna lose money. It, it's kind of a, it's a hard one. I mean, I just don't see anybody wanting to take on that risk with a bond.
Okay, cool. Well, no BOI would be even better, because it's easier. And the interest is pretty low.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's more tangible for us, I think, than bonds.
Yeah.
Unless you've got somebody who's got money to throw away, that's willing to take on that risk, and I just don't know anybody who would.
Okay. All right, good. Well, that helps. Yeah, I don't know why, I was thinking they only do capital, but that's good. Right, law enforcement, they would like two new vehicles. I do think, along with the computers and the printers, we should have a rundown of what our vehicles are, and how much money that our owners have. We talked about that before. Hundred and fifty-nine thousand has been requested, and that is to balance the budget. And I question the nineteen thousand going to the BARS litigation. Here's the reason why. The bu, the fund is off-balance by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Part of that is going to be taking money they have to give to another fund, and then asking Pilt to infill that money as part of the hundred and fifty-nine thousand. My question is, it seems, there's a lot of steps there. If the fund is not balanced, shouldn't their money be used to help balance the budget?
Yeah, I, I kind of understand what you're saying there, and I'm trying to think back, was it, the nineteen thousand, was that what was left over from last year's BARS account? I mean, basically-
Well, it's part of some of, it's, it's sitting in the public safety cash, it is unspent. They didn't spend the full fifty thousand that they received. So it's kind of sitting in their reserves, which if they're worried about their reserves, they're again, if they take that out of there, that's a little over a mil, reducing their reserves. So it's just kind of how you look at it. While the idea's good, yeah, it's like taking nineteen thousand, and then including that, and then needing another hundred and fifty-nine. If you didn't give that, then they'd only need a hundred and forty thousand to balance.
And, and, yeah.
It's, it's a plane on the map.
But then, and I think, and then directly that would impact what Cory had.
Which impacts his bills and stuff for his budget, and what comes out of there. So it's kind of, it would almost be just easier, if Pilt's gonna do it, just let Pilt pay the nineteen thousand, then try to do all these ins and outs from one fund to another, and it gets muddy. And I, I'm pretty sure the auditor would go look at that and say, I have issues with that. Because there's, there's caveats with transferring from a more restrictive fund, such as public safety, to the general fund. The only ones that don't have the restrictions are Pilt and the general fund. The others are special revenue, and they have more restrictions, because that's where some of our discussion with Bill is, they were spending from the detention fund to public safety. Well, by the nomenclature, it's a more, it was more restrictive than the public safety, and that was a no-no. And same thing with the thirty thousand that public safety gave to general fund for the wages that year. That was one of the things they told me, that was just a no-no, don't do it again. I said, well, we are anyway, because you're taking from a more restrictive fund, being public safety, and putting it in a general fund. So we have to watch those, so we don't, and it's almost cleaner just to pay it right out of the fund itself than trying to transfer. It gets lost in translation a little bit.
Just easy, just to take the money out of Pilt and put it into Cory's, leave this nineteen in here.
And it's already in Cory's, because it's a general fund.
And then just give a hundred and forty out of Pilt, and you still have the hundred and fifty-nine. And we don't have to worry about three transactions to try to get money to go to the same place.
That's kind of one of those issues, I'd like to say that's how fraud occurs. If you need to start doing things like that, and we don't want to go down that road, I won't go down that road, I'll fight against it. Because it does have the appearance of foul play.
So earlier, changing the subject, but keeping in the same fund, earlier you said you had found an increase of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in expenditures requested.
Approximately, just the public's, and the deputies operating and misleading, um, maintenance, operations and maintenance, operating costs. But then some of the others, like dispatch, theirs is just wages, so there wasn't much decrease. Detention, you know, there's, they have some, but the public safety operations covers a lot of the detention and dispatch funds. And so it kind of just jumped at me when I was looking at it, what they had budgeted last year, and what they want budgeted this year. It was just comparing those two, and just operations management, it's a hundred and thirty dollars.
Was, was that, was that a hundred and thirty thousand, are the two cars in there?
Part of it, part of it.
So that, that's the major part of it, though.
And part of it was them wanting to, that is part of, yeah, considering cars, stuff for the new deputy at his site down there.
Oh, okay.
A few of the, you know, why they provide the building or office space, office materials and things. It's more, because it's not just here to grab, you have to have some on-site, so that's. And the vehicles, they say as they get older, they cost more to repair with the tires and the oil changes, and those things break. When the Ford place closed, and the other places are in town, I think they're a little pricier than Ford. But they can order bigger quantities and have a lower rate, and I think our smaller vendors can, and that's part of it.
Where is the money? There's CIP for new vehicles, and I think it's a forty-eight thousand dollars. Where did that come from? Do you know?
Well, some of that was insurance replacements, city donating some. Last year going into that, it's part of their interim local agreement, I think twenty-five thousand. I think they said donations, I think FIRE or somebody had given them a little money to go into that, plus they haven't spent it all. So they have a little bit in there. But with insurance between the vehicles and high pursuit charges and insurances, they've had to, that's where they've been putting some of that money. And they have to spend it, but I, off the top of my head, don't know the exact amount of what's in there.
So one thing, a couple of things. With this budget, the fifty thousand dollar transfer from the Mason War Fund is, could be used for a vehicle, very easily. We have a CIP, we could easily match that or add to it, to afford a second vehicle, if that's what we decide to do through the process. The hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, I have some issues with that. One, we have a memo that announced everybody. Everybody has obeyed that memo. And what that memo said is, you will submit a balanced budget. We have a practice that goes back long before I got here, that we do not use Pilt to balance budgets. Pilt is being asked to balance this budget. What's being said is, no, we're not gonna use it to balance the budget, we just want to make sure that it's there. Well, when you look at what the spreadsheet says, it clearly says, this balance, this budget is not balanced without the hundred and fifty-nine thousand for Pilt. So I think this fund needs to go back, they need to balance it without the hundred and fifty-nine thousand. However, I have no problem working together as a team to come up with. We will put money in the CIP for your future expenses for vehicles, weapons, whatever it is, maintenance. As long as there is a plan. The request for a plan has been asked for for many, many years now. We want a solid plan on how you're going to balance your budget moving forward. We bailed out this department year after year after year. Asking for Pilt just to balance it at the beginning of the year. That just is going to compound the problem, because what happens next year? Hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars is in the budget, but now it'll be two hundred and fifty. If they cannot live within their means, they need to find another source. There are grants that could be applied for. Nick, years ago, was talking about the grants that used to go to that department, and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the question again was, well, why don't they give grants now? And Nick said, because I'm no longer there to write them. Not that the grants went away, Nick and his expertise and dedication went away. There are other avenues. Bill Jiroki worked with them, and they are discussing right now on the eleven. I think that's a possibility, if that's the way they wanna go. We also talked about creating the J twenty-four law enforcement district. Letting the Wheatland area be their own community with their own law enforcement presence. And how do they want that to look? And then the rest of the county being a separate district, you don't have the, the war between the north and the south. Those are all opportunities, but I, in good conscience, and as a fiscal decision, I just don't think we can take PIL to balance a budget, especially when it goes against our policy. So, those, those my thought on that.
That's kinda, I, I agree, I agree and disagree, the thing is that they, they're saying that they want a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and they're gonna put a hundred thousand of that away, but it's in here that balances their budget, so I don't know where they're gonna put it. And if they don't have it to use, then how does it balance a budget? So Debbie, the hundred, what'd you say, with a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar difference in the operating? Is that what you're looking at, the subtotal of O N M plus the equipment? Is that the?
Yeah, it was just the O N M portion under the public safety for the deputies.
Cause the O N M's about a twenty-one thousand dollar increase, and the equipment's eighty-four thousand dollar increase.
And I know, and that was another thing I need to send Brandon a note to, they had the nineteen thousand as part of their revenue in their budget, and it's not a revenue, it's a transfer out, so it would be an expenditure, cause it's not a transfer in. Cause it's already in their public safety account, so that's gonna affect that bottom line anyway. That's something I wanna talk to Black Mountain and see if I can include. If there's a way to run those reports to include those transfers out as expenditures, like the transfers in are in as revenues. But that's, that's created some issues. Two separate categories that don't necessarily show when I run those reports, but expenditures. I just took the, it might be, all over, in the whole fund, a hundred and thirty-nine. But just the deputies line item, the four one oh one one oh, last year's budgeted, and the means that they were proposing, that's like a hundred and three, I think. But it includes vehicles. Cause that really, to me, that shouldn't be in their public safety budget, that needs to come out of their C I P, which is not the mills, it would help their budget with not needing the mills or PIL. As far as bottom line, because they are getting mill money, we have to watch, that's where the reserves are important. So if they're not spending out of there, and spending out of the C I P, it makes a difference in what the bottom numbers look like. But that's another, another thing I need to get with, and that I don't know if Bill understood, or if they understood how that works necessarily. So that's why the, I want to send out another email to people with their C I Ps. Because they're standalone, they earn interest, they don't count as part of your operations, which is to your, to their advantage, to spend it out of there versus your regular fund.
So when they come out of the C I P, they have to do a budget amendment on it?
If they spend out of the C I P and didn't budget, like last year, everybody had zeros to spend anything out of their C I Ps. If they did spend, when I did my budget amendment, I had to give them spending authority. I just had to make sure they had gotten revenue and/or had the tax to cover it. But that's, we'll dip into those reserves if they aren't watching that as well on those. That's how the airport got their new runway, where they put money into their C I P, and the more money they had, the more interest it earned, which helped them build their reserves of in the C I Ps, which they have no limit for, but that's how they helped fund the airport. Ambulance, kinda is the same way. Vehicle, equipment, weapons, they have a C I P for weapons, that they wouldn't have to budget money spending out of their regular fund, but put into the weapons account. We have that, we have vehicle, and we have a detention center C I P, that if we could get some money in the C I P for the improvements to the building versus Mike's budget, or their general operating budget, makes their tax no money go farther for the everyday operations versus C I Ps for those major purchases. I think people forget about that a little bit.
It's harder.
Yeah.
It's easier to just.
It's outside, it's kinda like a savings you don't touch really often, and we kinda forget it's there, I think. Or if, we see it as one, I see, I have a different, I have to look at it. But we're kinda associated as it's my budget, and don't realize the fund numbers are what delineates the different ways they're spent, or how to look at them, and how they affect your budgets. So like, if you were to donate money for new vehicles, if you put it, and set it in their revenue line item as a donation from PIL, into their vehicle C I P, that keeps some of their expenditures, cause the revenue and expenditures are coming out of the C I P fund.
So, that was, I was just thinking, that was my question, I was gonna ask you, if you can designate that. I think that's a better way of doing it.
It is the better way for me, because if they don't buy it, or just meet you with one this year, that money sits there and earns interest. So when Doug gets the interest statements, and he knows this is how much the C I Ps, they get a certain portion of all that interest that's earned. So it's a, it's kind of our in-house savings, cause we get interest back from the bank, cause they're borrowing our money. And we're not touching it, so it's sitting there. That's kinda how it has to do with the schools, they earn interest on some of their stuff too. The districts.
So even if that money, even if, even if you did give them that, put that, take that, earn it out of the PIL and put it into the C I P, it would draw interest until they bought the car. So is that, that would be better than just, because they're talking about just putting it in a fund and having it sitting there. We're better off to put it in the C I P, then we'll use the other designated for the car, and we also draw interest on it.
You know, I think too, and I'm, I'm always gonna take time to do this, but I need to get to a point where so much of the budget is part of their C I P, so that fund continues to build. When they get to that point, in three years, when that car needs to be purchased, that money is already there. Rather than have to keep infilling it each time.
David did that for a while, every year, I need this much for a Grader. And it sat in his road C I P, and it earned interest. And that's how he paid for Grader flat out versus a lease or something. And that's kinda the same with the cars, if we could get there, we tried, but then we had Mason's car, it's been tied up. Couple of them blow up, engines and things, deer decimates them, that's made it hard for them to get up there. Cause insurance, even though with the insurance, they're still deductible, and they don't get all their money back. Or the equipment to the installment of fresh vehicle, versus if they can use some of it, like you said, a little year. We can't always use the same stuff, because the interiors change, and you can't reuse what you had. Now, the places will buy it back for people who have older vehicles, but I don't know if that's even an option. But it does make it hard. But that's the idea.
Yeah.
With those C I Ps. That's why we have them for detention, it just. Spend, spend. That's why I keep trying, if you don't have to have it, don't spend it, it stays there. And when you can use it, if you do need to spend it, you can always put it in your C I P and save it for later. When you buy your vehicles, cause it does take a while for them to order and get them.
Does.
We'll just like go down to the dealership and, we've got a car.
Right now, the C I P has fifty-four thousand dollars in it from the cash report.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-three thousand was put in by the city last year, probably from inter-local. So the balance of thirty-one thousand is county money. Not counting money, but it is, but it's not from the city. I don't think we should be using the city's money. That's theirs, that's for a vehicle that they have an agreement to buy, we shouldn't be using that in our calculations. So it leaves a balance of thirty-one thousand dollars in that fund today. It looks like, Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, the equipment at eighty-four thousand dollars, four two oh one one zero, it's nine forty, is the cars? Okay, so they're saying they need eighty-four thousand dollars for two vehicles. If we took eighty-four thousand dollars minus the thirty-one, which is in the C I P, or in the cash, for the C I P, that leaves a balance of fifty-three thousand dollars. We could put that fifty-three thousand dollars into our bucket for special requests to be considered. And that's two vehicles this year for them. That needs to come out of the budget though, and go to the C I P, like Debbie's saying, for best accounting practices. And two, that's just the gift from PIL versus balancing budget. And then we can also tell people where the money went.
So one thing I think we can do here, is if, if you guys are willing to, we can get, you know, Brandon and Lynn here, and get Bill Jiroki's spreadsheet up. And this, this kind of move this stuff around and see how this balances out for them.
Yeah, um, we can do that as a team.
Yes.
Absolutely fine. As long, yeah. Okay, I, I think that's fine. I'm on pace. I might just say it plain and simple, I'm on pace.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
And then where you're coming from.
Good. And I also wanted on the table that we do have a memo that said you need to submit a balanced budget. I know that's hard. It's hard on everybody, but almost everybody did it. So yeah, we have to work towards a team. PIL is not for balancing budgets, especially without a solid plan. And, um, we have a record of being incredibly generous with this department, I have no problem continuing that. Just came up with another plan, did two vehicles. We have to do it within a budget, within budget constraints. As long as we're on the same page as on that, and we give a verbal, then I'm willing to do your idea of, um, working as a team on this. And if there's anything hanging out there that you're not comfortable with, as far as our conversation, I'd like to know it before we walk into a team situation. Because what's happened in the past is all the figures get pointed at one person, even though there's five or six in the room. And that's, it's not right to the taxpayers, and it's not right to the county.
I think if you give us an opportunity to go through these line items, and give an explanation of what the utility increase is.
He kinda touched on that, but I am not in the detail of some of those. And I know utilities, and right now that's gonna be a big unknown, cause we're still working on some of that with the city. And it's gonna impact all of us, our water sewer, for all of us that share in that courthouse, or, that's gonna affect all of us, and so I know they're.
Well, here's the thing.
But.
We spent a lot of money to get Bill Jiroki here, to educate them on how to balance their budget. Last year, what started all the screaming fits was the fact that we were working with them on their budget. It's a new day, it's a new commission, I get that. But what, what did we spend money with Bill for? This was never supposed to be submitted unbalanced, and it was. And now we're gonna go line by line item through there, which is one of the things when it screamed about. Well, that should have been done with Bill. So I, I feel like it's a step.
If you wanna send it back and have them re-submit it, that's fine.
I'm fine with your idea, I just, I need you to know where my hesitation is.
I understand.
I appreciate that.
I do. I, I, I know that, that Brandon has, has worked very hard on this budget.
No doubt.
And I wanna give him the opportunity to, to give us an idea of where these numbers come from.
I'll have to ask him, I'll have to ask him, he'll tell me.
Why don't we put it to Brandon? If Brandon wants to work with us, line by line.
Yeah.
We're good with that.
Yeah.
These are the parameters, though.
Sure.
If he wants to rework it, it's a bit of balanced budget with a list of special requests he'd like us to consider.
Right.
We're fine with that, but it's his choice. How about that? Will you, will you ask him that, Debbie, as far as, um, our discussion? And if you wanna send a, a draft to us, and we can all force it.
I'll probably need to get them a little bit anyway, just to clear up some of the little things I found, just glancing at it. Cause that will change what they do when they can fix it, and I'm hoping to have their wages done with what we talked about on Friday, with all the different changes and the bargaining and the little things. So it gives him a better idea where they're sitting with their wages. He might have that way out, and what he needs, so that'll help him if he does. I just don't know where that's sitting yet. I don't know, that's why I told him, I need that, I wanna get to a, a better accurate representation for him, so he has a better idea of where it's sitting.
Sounds good. And that'll be important too.
I know that they have a, a small increase, it's not reflected here from, based on what we have, our union negotiations.
Right.
You, you know.
Some of those little twenty-five cent cents don't add up. But they do impact over the big picture.
So the last one they have a question on, that we need to address, is search and rescue. So there was an error there. Debbie, can you explain what that mistake was with the budget they submitted, and what, how much money they have?
What they forgot to remember when they were working on their search and rescue budget, is back when they were doing all the renovations to the certain existing search and rescue building, the trust board donated twenty-five dollars with the restriction, and it only be used for the building upgrades that they needed. And they hadn't spent all that. for the building upgrades that they needed, and they hadn't spent all that yet. So it still showed they had a lot of extra money in the search and rescue reserves, in their CIP. And they don't, they only had about thirty-three hundred from that original donation that they can use for search and rescue updates. Trust board insisted that it be spent for the building retrofits and things that needed to be done. I don't know if they want it back yet, that was a question I needed to ask Debbie next time I saw her, if they want it back when they're done? Or if the sheriff's office has to request, or search and rescue has to request it be used for something else.
Gotcha.
So using it for the tracks and those other things that Brandon and Wynne talked about.
Okay.
It can't be used for those unless the trust board unrestricted money in the budget for them.
Gotcha.
And Michelle remembered that, I kind of remembered it, but I'd forgotten. So she showed me the paper, she kept it. Because the trust board was very specific about that with us, that we put it working tract, because they wanted to monitor that, so.
Did you share that email you sent to us on that with Wynne and Brandon on the search and rescue budget?
I know for sure I did Brandon, because he responded.
Okay.
I thought I included Wynne, but I didn't hear back, so I'm not positive about it.
But if they could rework that, that would be good too.
I think they was going to.
Okay. And that's pretty amazing.
That changes a little bit.
Yes, Tim. Just a quick clarification, trust board keeps getting mentioned. Not to be confused with the Canyon Ferry trust board, which trust board are you talking about?
Broadwater County Trust Board.
I don't think it has been mentioned today. Has it?
The only trust board I'm aware of, Broadwater County Trust Board, that's the only one I know of. And Canyon Ferry Trust, I, that's a name I don't recognize.
And they'll be submitting their budget with the Hospital District Board next week, the seventeenth.
Debbie was, Debbie was in and in our office asking about it. But if the Canyon Ferry is the same as the Broadwater Trust Board?
Again, I just didn't know for sure which one you're talking about, for sure, and how the Canyon Ferry would be included in this, did not make any sense, so that's why I asked.
Canyon Ferry Trust Board is separate.
Totally separate, yes.
Is not related with Broadwater Trust Board.
Okay. And again, I didn't know what trust board you were talking about, that's why I asked the question, thank you.
Because I know those are the ones, still in my mind, my nose, is the Broadwater Trust.
Thank you Debbie. Okay, one thirty Economic Development Administration grant for Wheatmontana.
So we'll make sure we guys know what we're talking about here. Commission, we're going over to, to come back.
Sorry, can you stick up, can you come back?
So the activities that are going on right now, or being proposed to be going on in Wheatmontana area. And the, the demographics of Broadwater County allow us, if, if interested, to apply for federal Economic Development Administration grants for upgrades or creation of infrastructure that can help to create or retain jobs. We have been working on the Bridger Brewing process or project in addition to working with Wheatmontana and some of the other businesses in the area on what would a, a public sewer system do to help to at least maintain the jobs that we have and potentially attract additional jobs to that region of Broadwater County. This is a, potentially a separate application from what is going on with the, the targeted economic development district. This is an application because of our fairly high levels of poverty within Broadwater County, that we do qualify for these funds, it's infrastructure grant funds. So at this point, we have been working with an engineer to at least create a preliminary engineering report that would allow us to actually apply to the federal government for these federal grants. In this case, the federal grant, at least what we're proposing, is that the federal grant would cover half of the cost of a public sewer system. That would also include the roadway that goes down to this public sewer system that would be in and own likely from the Water Sewer District. The intent of this district is that it would be a public entity that would supply or provide sewage for the brewery and other businesses in the area, either new or existing, at some point when they choose to want to join into it. So it isn't anything that is forcing anybody to do it, but creates incentive or creates kind of a backstop of having this public system. If you aren't aware, the soils down in that area of the county have quite a few layers of clay in it and wastewater systems can have issues. If, if your volume is large enough, then your, your clay soils start to become saturated and then they, the traditional septic system does not work really well. So we have been working with the federal EDA to have this application. One of the items that, it, it isn't required, but it's one of the items that also, that always provides additional assistance to us, is having that the local government is in support in, in generalities of a public system being good for the community. There is no burden to the county to this, it is just a application that would be for the sewer system. The kicker besides potentially bringing these additional jobs into it is we have been working with the owners of Bridger Brewing to get property that would be, could be used by the county for the sheriff's department, ambulance service, fire hall, and potentially solid or public works. This application, I think kind of the kicker to it is, is this application would allow us to be able to create a main line that would go up past the property that we have preliminarily, preliminarily identified for the county. Without this grant, the scope of work probably will scale down to the sewer system and a main line kind of running between the existing businesses to Wheatmontana and to the brewery. With, then it would take time and additional, I mean, potential businesses to be able to get that additional trunk line in. So that really is the intent at this point. For us, we're just down here to ask if the commission is interested in being supportive of a application and that the county would be willing to have a, a support letter to be added into that application to the federal EDA. And if you are interested, we've put some language together that you can use as sample.
I've just put together a real loose support letter that has kind of the, just broken down by the talking points that we have for this application. And I mean, primarily for EDA, it's the job component. We know what Bridger will be creating, just in their manufacturing facility alone, but then retaining what's already been there as a long time anchor with Wheatmontana. And we have been told, you know, and it's pretty well known, they have issues with their current system, so this being kind of a way to anchor those two together in terms of they have an up-to-date sewer system and it allows for future planning and growth.
And that's, every different grant, kind of grantor has different interests. Federal Economic Development Administration, it is really about value-added manufacturing. They do not basically support retail-type jobs. They're not against retail jobs, but they don't support with finances infrastructure that would, I mean, that would help to put in at a Costco or something like that. They want to have a full-blown, something that creates what they call good paying jobs and specifically primary sector type jobs. Again, there will be the meeting later in the day talking about the, a component that could be used to pay for the other half of this. The key that we want to make sure that you understand is since even the conversation of having a public sewer system in that area of the county, there's been multiple businesses that we have had that have started to talk to us about whether this would work for them. At this point, I mean, one was a battery manufacturer, the other was a manufacturer of basically medical products. The battery manufacturer hasn't made a decision yet, the medical products group was interested, and we just can't provide enough natural gas there. I mean, we weren't even on the table until the talk that there would be a sewer system. The one that we're also trying to pursue at this point, we have two additional businesses that have expressed interest, one of them right now, the other one historically, used to be Country Classic, which is now Dairy Gold, had put a buy-sell on some property in that area many years ago with the idea of moving the Creamery Milk Production Facility out of Bozeman to this location. They couldn't pencil out the numbers, including to do a construction of a building and a sewer system that could provide wastewater treatment for their plant. This system, that was part of our PER that we are finishing up right now, this system is designed so that it can support high BOD or TESS, total solids suspended, or BOD, I forget his bio something. This system with some minimal pretreatment can treat those types of waste. And that was part of the reason in the, in the scheme of which system would be proposed. Instead of a traditional lagoon system, this is a treatment plant. And because of that, it can actually support higher levels of BOD, which will be seen because of the brewery, could be seen because of the bakery and other potential businesses that we would like to try to attract to the area. Without a sewer system, I mean, there is additional interest in the area, but it will continue to lag behind other areas just because of that lack of infrastructure. So this is just a request of a support letter.
Yes, Tim.
Do you have a tentative estimation figure of the grant that you're applying for?
Right now, the, the preliminary engineering report is looking somewhere between two-point-five and three-point-two million for the whole this first phase of the system, which would be the main plant, the, the holding lagoon after the MBR system, the roadway into it, the main line that runs between properties towards Wheatmontana and the spur main line, which would go past the county's property. This typically, they can go up to about half, they have a kind of a sweet spot of one million to one-point-five million, so we're asking for one-point-five at this point.
Does, does this system allow for expansion and growth on?
Yes. So specifically on these systems, it is a full treatment plant, so it has to sit inside a building. So the building that we're designing, or is being proposed in the design, is big enough for two skids with the ability to add on to the building to potentially run two additional skids on to it. And when I say skids, an MBR micro, micro bioreactor, bioreactor is, it basically looks like a shipping container except without the skins. So it has the tanks in it, all of the pumps, so it pre-filters, then it runs through a, a continuous agitation tank that has basically bugs that are, that are eating at the solids and the sugars. Then it goes through a filter system and actually the discharge meets groundwater or drinking water standards. So one of the things we're really trying to work with DEQ and a few others is can we use that holding pond afterwards as potentially fire suppression? But these systems run anywhere from two-seventy-five to four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So as demand increases, you drop another one of these, they come in, they basically roll off on us, the skid rolls off the truck, and they're plug and play at that point. But the building will be designed for the capacity for two, which right now would put us, I mean, the best estimates is twelve to fifteen years down the road. With the ability, if a lot of growth comes in, if other businesses or high-volume businesses were interested, we could add two more easily to the system.
That's kind of my question, I guess, where's, where is that trigger point to add, have to add more system? I mean, what we have now, we'll, we'll handle the brewery.
Yes. It will handle, I mean
If the businesses are there now, if they decided to jump in.
Exactly. So right now, as designed, if we didn't get another business there, this probably whole, I mean, will provide enough sewage for treatment for everybody that's there for the next fifty years. I mean, and the, the equipment is typically designed to do that, or more. If we start to see additional businesses that are interested, if there is additional demand from some of the other individuals who would want to join the Water Sewer District, we probably can do well for quite a few years. It's if we get an industrial user who wants, right now Wheatmontana and Bridger are the two big users. And projections are, is Bridger can go to just about complete production levels, which would be sixty thousand barrels a year. And I mean, there's about, right at about forty thousand barrels is their trip point. When we did the work with Lewis and Clark Brewery, they have been designed to go to sixty thousand barrels. I think they're up, they were at twenty-seven thousand barrels right now, and are, with, looking at the capacity to go to thirty-five. That's probably where we would, could be within five to ten years. That will be about the tipping point. Now, that could potentially be another grant application to offset half of those costs. Or it would be picked up by the TED or the Water Sewer District at that point when they trip over that.
Is there rooms and provision for residential in that, or no?
Not, Drew, well, I'll, I'll come back, yes, the system itself doesn't care. The system and the Water Sewer District has the ability to do whatever they would want. So if somebody upgraded some residential community, came to the Water Sewer District and asked to be added in, that potentially could be done. Inside the proposed targeted economic development district, that is one thing that is somewhat, is by zoning removed from the capability inside the footprint. But as an example, if the Kim's property between Wheatmontana and the livestock auction, if that was a housing development or a workforce housing, they could petition to the Water Sewer District, attach, and just use that as treatment. The plant doesn't care, it likes lots of sugar, which both the brewery and the bakery create. So probably the O and M on the facility wouldn't go up much at all. I, I think our biggest point right now is, is we have a business, we have an opportunity to basically attract and keep a business in the area. With the ability to create kind of a backstop for some of the existing businesses if they run into an issue or if they wanted, or if something came to their ability to actually increase their property, their jobs, something like that. Again, not trying to force anybody into it, but creating this as a backstop that, that they could take advantage of.
How, how would, how would rates, how would rates do?
So on this, it, it comes down to rates will be one of those things, it, it's basically separated into three different buckets. You have your capital expenditure upfront for the structure, the, I mean, for the building, the MBR system and all of the, the plumbing. Then you have your O and M, your power, your sugars that you may or may not have to add, and somebody that has to monitor the place now and again. What's nice in Craig and Wolf Creek, it, it's all done by a smartphone, so you actually, whoever's monitoring it will be seeing that all the time. And then kind of that third caveat to it is, is what type of a sinking fund you want to put on the facility upfront. So if it looks like you're starting to go towards that you're going to have more demand, the, the actual fees would be based off of, I mean, what the operation costs are and are you trying to create a capital improvement plan that would help to offset the costs for that needed that would help to offset the cost for that needed expansion? Or do you put that burden onto the, that next group that comes in that trips you over that, that mark? That would be up to the water sewer district to kind of be working with their attorneys to determine that, that price point. Again, every time that we can avoid some of the CapEx, the capital expenditure on this, it helps to drive down your costs. Again, working with the city of towns and every grant that we can get drives down the, the, the cost that the taxpayer has to pay back.
So what you're asking from us today is support for this grant? Nothing more? No monetary obligation? Okay.
Because again, for EDA, I mean, it looks, they always preach the, kind of having the public entity aware of it and if they can generate that, just that support letter. I think that moves up a couple of points on the, the point chart, so to speak. And again, I mean, this is a project that's very close to, you know, all the growth that's happening in the Galatin Gateway. Our own EDA rep is minutes away from that. He's aware of, you know, the way the growth is going out that way. So it, it does look very good if we have just even a letter of support.
So what you're asking us, us is, do we support jobs? And do we support our community in Wheaton? I think that's, it needs a couple of yeses. I'd be happy to move. It's not too soon that we support this letter, although I think we should put it on our own letterhead. And, um, I guess that's it. That's my motion.
Is there a second? You have a second motion?
Yeah.
Motion then made second to approve the letter for the infrastructure application for Wheaton-Tana with being placed on a broadwater county letter in all favor. Right? Both same. Motion carries.
Wait, can you send that electronically and then, um, we can scan it back to you?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Oh, I haven't heard you say it. Well, that'd be the first time, Steve.
I know, I know. Gee, that's why you gotta be fine.
Hey, we have a little bit of mail here. This is, uh, this is a county partner helping to serve, uh, side of the water. That's, uh, we'll see. Bill, and then we have a Broadwater County Hands Information Coverage Committee. I think if else there's issues, they're a rainy reminder. And we have a Amisization Task Order we've signed or reported to determine the power.
And can we consult that?
Yes.
I will move that we sign that on date, Task Order.
One second.
Most of them made second to assign the Amisization Task Order in all favor. Right? Anything else to come before the commission? Ed, did you have something?
I do. If you got a couple of minutes, I went to that Capitol 360 meeting last week.
Okay.
And this is what they sent out as far as, they want to create a, an administrative committee. And the members on it would be BLM, NRCS, USFS, the NRC, Lewis and Clark, Jefferson County, Broadwater County, and the Health and the City Manager. And they just want to make sure we have a representative from you guys that would be on this committee. And this, uh, kind of outlines what that committee is going to be doing. So they said it didn't have to be a commissioner, but would be preferable.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks for hanging with us for the afternoon.
Yeah.
I did my initial hyperpromotion, but there are several different committees. The hyperpromotion is read, that's the, read the comments, get it. That's when you just read the name, you read the awards, like, in, like, the fashion, the Ford's fashion. Yes, or when that, that's awards.
This looks excellent. Good.
Anything else you need to come forward?
You know what, just these, but we can deal with them later. Oh, this one. This is just a reminder, this is, um, what Kerry sent us last week. And I don't think it needs any signatures, even though there are other tabs here. It doesn't require...
David, are you guys sticking around for the later meeting?
Probably not.
Okay.
Think we'll pass it like here, David.
I might, I might.
It's gonna be fun, guys.
Oh, yeah, it'll be fun.
This is just our paperwork that shows that we're floodplain receptive already through the previous, um, process. So it's just sending it to us as reminders.
So we save all that money and it goes to the girl's plan?
Yeah, although that's a minor part of it, but yes, I like what you're thinking.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, we will adjourn at 1:56.
So can you, um, we do have a closed door. We do have a closed door. I haven't had a chance to see if there is an update yet from McKenzie and, um, Michelle. So are you guys good with scheduling the closed door either Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday probably works.
And if not, next Monday is probably...
Thursday works best for me.
Okay. Maybe after the department head meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. That work for you, Daryl?
Um...
Sure.
Okay.
No closed door today?
No closed door today. Thanks, Anna. I thought it was important to at least get an out there, Justin, because we have to have it.